All right. Good evening, I'm going to call to order the Monroe Township Board of Education meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 16th, 2022. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gorski, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Arminio.
Here.
Ms. Belko.
Here.
Ms. Bierman.
Here.
Ms. Bora.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Ms. Fabiano.
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Here.
Ms. Ratner. Mr. Rutske.
I am here.
Ms. Skirby.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum present this evening.
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted February 11th, 2011 at all schools on the district website at https://www-monroe.k12 nj.us, The Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Right, thank you very much. Okay, prior to going into closed session, we need a motion to appoint a temporary board secretary for closed session.
I appoint Mrs. Bierman.
Second.
Third.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4 through 6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: Interviews for Superintendent of School Position. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. We're going to go into closed session. I would estimate that we would be in closed session probably till at least 7:30, 7:45, which we will come back in then and continue on with the public meeting. Thank you. All right, we're going to call the meeting back to public session. Following our closed session, we have a resolution that we would like to read. Mrs. Belko?
Yes, so the, in a closed session, the Board has decided to bring forth this motion, and the motion is to engage the New Jersey School Boards Association in continued search for a superintendent for the District of Monroe Township.
Second.
Okay, could we get a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Ms. Belko made the motion and Mr. Chiarella seconded, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is it open now to discussion?
Sure.
Okay, I think the motion should include a time certain for closing, we're going to engage it, but then do we have a date that we want to? There's two different issues. We're just going to make a motion for engagement of school boards, is that all right now?
Yes.
Okay, and that can be, and the details of that are yet to be determined, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, if we can have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Ms. Ratner.
I recuse.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano.
Yes.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Madam President, motion passed.
Okay. We will continue with our agenda, item number six, Approval of Minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the Public Board of Education meeting, January 26th, 2022?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, is there any corrections or revisions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or recusals?
I recuse.
Mr. Chiarella recuses?
So noted.
Okay, can I get a motion to, for the closed session meeting, January 26th, 2022?
I make motion.
Second.
Okay, any corrections or revisions? Any discussion?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Ms. Arminio abstains. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any other recusals or abstentions?
Recuse, I recuse.
Mr. Chiarella recuses.
I recuse for the portion I was unable to attend, I don't know if I'm able to divide it.
Okay. Great, all right, thank you. Our next item is our student board members' report. Ms. Jane, would you like to go first?
So, this month, at Applegarth, they had their first visit with their unified partners from the high school on the, today, the 16th. It was the first time the program came to Applegarth, so it was very exciting for them. Jump Rope for Heart activities are still happening at Applegarth, and the students have raised over $12,000, and they're still counting. They collected a huge box of socks in collaboration with an initiative from the high school key club. They would like to thank their families and organizers for the many generous donations received. The principal's book club for the Wild Robot will be held on Thursday, March 10th, and they have a pajama day to support the Monroe Township Police Department on the 23rd of March. At Oak Tree, they are celebrating February 22nd, 2022 Day, where staff and students will dress in twos, so two ties, two bows, two tutus, and they also have a two-minute dance party at 2 o'clock. The One Book, One School will be held on February 22nd, where the principal reads the same story to the entire school throughout the day, and classes participate in activities connected to the story. For Valentine's Day Spirit Day, they wore pink, red, or white, and they also celebrated random acts of kindness on February 7th, they're celebrating it tomorrow, February 27th, February 17th, and they wrote kind acts they completed on a stinky note and will be displayed on the school wall. At the high school this month, the murder mystery dinner was on the 10th and 11th, and it was a huge success. The counselors came in and scheduled students during their gym block this week, so the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors are set for next year. The FBLA state testing was today, and the DECA state trip to Atlantic City will be on February 28th to March 2nd.
Great, thank you very much. Next, Mr. Letter Polly?
No worries.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No worries. Woodland School celebrated Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day with several classroom activities. Ms. Matira's class read "My Brother Martin" by Christine King Ferris, and "Keeping the Dream Alive," a scholastic article featuring MLK Jr.'s granddaughter. This class took Dr. King's speeches and analyzed three quotes with the partners. Ms. Rootford, Ms. Levitt, and the fourth grade classes celebrated World Read-A-Loud Day with several different authors, such as Tricia Springstubb, Meg Dratcher, Deborah Schumaker, and just to name a few engaging students with via Zoom. The winner of the Woodland School Spelling Bee was Shiva Patel from Ms. Kucher slash Ms. Delius's fifth grade class, and the alternate is Erin Sarant from Ms. Emmens' fourth grade class. As student council, Ms. Dale and the student council advisor has coordinated a Super Bowl from Wednesday, 2/9 through Friday to 2/18, and the soup donations will help replenish the Monroe Township Senior Center Food Pantry. At Barclaybrook, students are celebrating Black History Month during the month of February by learning about the many contributions of Black Americans throughout history. Students are researching famous Black Americans and showcasing what they have learned in a variety of ways. The cell focus for the month of February at Barclaybrook is kindness. Their school counselor shared lessons with classes about kindness, and students participated in a kindness challenge where they're tasked with participating in a variety of acts of kindness. In keeping with the kindness theme, Barclaybrook students created Valentines to brighten the day of local senior citizens. Through their effort, over 350 Valentines were delivered to two Monroe-assisted living facilities. At the middle school, at February, in February at the middle school, they're taking part in a Monroe Township High School sock drive, well, Monroe Township Middle School Drive, sock drive. Monroe Township Middle School had many qualifiers for the following events, including National Geography B, National Spelling Bee, and the National Science Bee. On February 11th, it was the Om's Day of Optimism, celebrating one of your former students with a day filled with the message of hope. On February 17th, well, tomorrow, the middle school career grant, Career Cafe, has a forensic scientist, forensic chemist, and on February 23rd, they're planning to have a MTMS band trip to Broadway. Fifteen MTMS seventh and eighth grade band students successfully auditioned into the Central Jersey Music Educator Association. And lastly, at Mill Lake, Mill Lake will be hosting the annual sock drive, which will be benefiting multiple organizations, such as Saturday Soup, Feeding Frenzy, and the Emergency Housing and Advocacy Program. Mill Lake has also celebrated and honored Black History Month in an authentic and meaningful way. Students have been educated on the different contributions of Black Americans, Americans ranging from the area of STEM, arts and entertainment, and even sports. And finally, and lastly, Mill Lake will be celebrating the historic date of February 22nd, 2022, by wearing either ties, tutus, or tie dye, and having a two-minute dance party.
Great, thank you very much. Our next item on our agenda is our Support Staff of the Year Presentations. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Chanley.
One of the wonderful opportunities that I happen to have as the acting superintendent is to acknowledge people that should be acknowledged. So what we're going to do is, we're going to walk over to the front table, and we have nine individual educational support staff that we'd like to recognize for going above and beyond the call of duty. We are very pleased that the state allows us to have various different areas in which we can celebrate our staff members. I think it's very important that we remember that we always utilize, and I try very hard to remember to utilize the word "staff" rather than just teachers, because although our educators are the individuals that impart the knowledge and work directly with the students, so do the other staff members, and that's why we mean by "support," because success is always a team effort, and at this time, it is my pleasure, I'm going to go forward to announce our Educational Support Personnel of the Year. Any special order? Doesn't matter, well, they're not alphabetical, so it's going to throw me off a little bit, but I'm going to start down here. And I will tell you that it has been a pleasure when we went on our journey from school to school to be able to present this acknowledgement to a lot of these professional support personnel who I've known as parents, so I think that was very, very nice for me, because I felt like we came full circle. So our first acknowledgement will be to Cecilia Parata, on behalf of Barclaybrook School. I want to apologize if I do not pronounce this correctly. It's Anuprittha Tandulwadika, from Applegarth School. We used to call him Little Tommy Taylor. He's not so little. So come on down to Old Thomas Taylor, on behalf of Monroe Township High School. Another familiar name, Ms. Janet Garavente, on behalf of Oak Tree School. Nice big family here, because we know we have our daughter at the middle school. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, congratulations again. Our next item is our committee reports. Do we have any committees wanting to report this evening? Mrs. Fabiano?
So the Community Engagement and Communications Committee met on Tuesday, February 8th, along with Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman, and Kate Ratner was present virtually. We shared that we finally had some correspondence with Senator Greenstein, where the senator initially invited several board members to trend in to meet with her and former education commissioner and the state's expert on fair funding formula, Mr. Kevin Damer. Since we would like to have Mrs. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, and Mr. Gorski present, we asked if the meeting could be held over Zoom so that more people could attend. Senator Greenstein replied, stating that she would like for us all to meet in person, so she will arrange for some new dates and a larger space for us to meet. It was asked that the Board submit questions ahead of this meeting, and that once we submit our questions, we can arrange a new date. We also discussed possibly sending letters to other legislators to hopefully garner more attention to Monroe. The district's advertising initiative is up and running. There is a large banner that can be found on the district website, where interested businesses can submit their interest to the district to begin advertising. The communication survey was sent out to the entire community with help from the mayor's office. We are looking forward to gathering the results of this survey and engaging more members of the community through various means of communication. Tomorrow, Mrs. Chanley and I, and I'm not sure if anybody else is joining us, but we're meeting with the own, family of own Pareek to discuss the next steps in how the district can work together with the Smiles for Own Foundation for their annual 5K event. We also discussed ways which we can engage our senior community, we discussed ideas like coffee with the superintendent or bagels with the board, and we also discussed ways to improve communication regarding transportation. It was discussed that we could look into adding text messages to the Global Connects, and I am happy to report that I did receive a text message this week, so that is up and running. That's my report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Fabiano? Karen?
Next steps on harvesting the questions, so that we can get the dates, is that going to be through board emails, or did we have a plan for that?
So, I was going to ask that, I don't know if it's, we wanted to do it through email, or if we wanted to just open it up to, for questions, but we thought it would be best to get ideas, questions from the entire Board, instead of just sending questions from the committee itself.
Correct, yeah, we were going to engage the whole Board in that process, so maybe we can, you know, if anybody has any questions that they think we should be asking, if you want to discuss it here, or we can do it through email and then bring it back to the committee, finalize that, and then send that out. She was waiting for our questions before giving us a date for the meeting. So that's our, that's our next step. Ms. Arminio?
Yes, could Katie send out to the Board, to the full Board, a reminder to send you questions, and if you want to put, like, an end date when you'll gather them, and then we can move on from that?
Sure.
That would be appreciated as a reminder.
Ms. Bora?
And I did, you know, mention it during the committee meeting, but since Jenna's here, I wanted to say that. It would be nice if we could get a little historical perspective, when you were part of the Fair Funding Committee, and where did that stop, and what, you know, what were the facts that came out of it? That could help us, you know, formulate our questions better. We don't ask something that we already know, and maybe ask better. So I was just looking to see if this, if the CEC committee could get your feedback from them, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Mrs. Ratner?
So I think it's great that we're opening up to the full Board, and I know that only the Board would be present at the meeting with the legislature and certain administration. Are we taking any questions from public as well, that we would then ask of the legislation, or are we only addressing questions that are brought from the Board members?
I think it would be appropriate, if anybody from the community wants to submit questions, we could definitely look at those as well. Ms. Arminio?
Do we still have that email, submit to the Board of Education? We had, at one point, there was an email address that said, "Submit."
Right, yep.
Is that still active? Or did we do away with that?
We could, I don't think it takes much to set up a new email, maybe Mrs. Chanley can look into having something like that.
But after that, because we did it for the survey and things, after that, we should close it down as well.
Oh, yes.
It shouldn't be an open email all the time, because then if people, if the public wants to send emails, they should send it to the Board President or the administration as such, because we don't know where the submit emails are really held, so they would also probably be, they should be for open public records, too. So it would be, if we open them for a specific reason, we should close them after a certain point.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Our next committee report?
I'll go.
Okay, Michelle?
Yes, the Policy Committee held their committee meeting on February 8th. We had quite a few mandatory committees, policies, I'm sorry, and the first one from really last year that we still haven't gone through, and it's on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to ask it to be removed after my report. We really didn't change the bylaw, it's 0164, and its conduct of board meetings. The discussion question that has not really been resolved through the Board Committee was changing the agenda, how the public agenda and the details of what, how the public agenda is read. So, some of the Board members suggested that the public forum should go before committee reports, and this way, if people wanted to make comments before the long, drawn-out committee reports, they would be able to do so. I suggested that without committee reports, some of the questions that the public might have would not even be publicized, so, we're still discussing that, so we're going to carry that again. If the public wants to respond, that would be great, if they responded to the Board, the Board President and myself as the committee, but we're, you know, we don't want to have you guys wait for so long in the audience, and yet we want all of the details to be put forward before the public forum, so it's sort of a, it's a double-edged sword. The next one, the next few have to do with federal awards funding. This has to do with really uniform administrative requirements for the administration, and how we do, when we get our federal awards, what our obligations under those federal awards are. And I'm just going to go through them quickly. Cost of the federal awards, cost principles, audit requirements, and all this has to do with the money we get from the federal government. The next one is mandatory disclosures, there are general reporting requirements, and we have to disclose in writing to the federal agency or to the New Jersey Department of Education violations of federal criminal law that potentially affect the award. These are all administrative things, but it is our obligation as a Board to, and probably the Finance Committee should go through these as well. The next one, also federal awards, internal controls, conflicts of interest, they talk about employees or Board of Education members and any conflicts of interest that might have to do with the funding. Then there's the contracts for goods or services funded by the federal grants, again, it's mandatory. There's a system for award management, and that's related to vendors and contracts, and we are obligated to make sure our contractors are in good standing, and if not, we have to report. That was, those were carried over from last month. This month, we talked about, and I would, this, where the parents should really take a look at some of these. These are also mandatory policy 2415.05, student surveys, analysis, examinations, testing, or treatment. This is very much something that parents should review. Additional compensatory special education and related services, that's policy, and it's a regulation change, R2460.30. There's student assessment, and we talked about student assessment in curriculum, but this is a mandatory program of student assessment, 2622. And the last one is anti-hazing. We are also mandatory, and we have anti-hazing regulation and policy, and in light of some of the things that go on in schools, and unfortunately, in our culture, this is a very important policy. And these last policies are, well, actually, all of these policies now are for a first reading tonight, so if the public takes a look at these and they want to comment on them, we still have until the next meeting. We need two public readings in order for these to be changed and put into effect, so, if anyone has any questions. I'm done with my report, thank you.
You got to do the second read stuff.
Oh, we have one last thing. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Bierman, please.
You had others for second read, right? So we have the org charts up for second read, and the...
Well, the others for second reading.
I'm going to deal with 1648.11.
Right.
Okay. So on 1648.11, which is the policy for the COVID road back guidelines, regulations that we've been discussing the last couple of committee meetings and the last couple of board meetings, where we've landed on some slight tweaks for second read that are for us tonight. There is verbiage in there that gives the superintendent the ability to pivot on the fly without any board approval upfront, as long as any of the guidelines they want to put in place are within the guidelines of the CDC, the Department of Health, and the Department of Education. So there's verbiage in there that puts that ability to pivot based on conditions of the day, of the week, however they see fit to run the district. We are adjusting the verbiage on masks, that at the expiration of the mandate from the governor, our district will adopt a policy that is mask optional, with the exception of when the CALI score, which is the COVID Activity Level Index, that's published by the state, and the numbers are updated weekly on Thursdays. Currently, I think we're in yellow. When we're in a state of red, masks would be required in our district, but otherwise, they would be optional, and of course, there would be policies in place, the rules from the state require absolutely no, you know, harassing or bullying for anybody that chooses to wear a mask when it's optional, and same thing if you're choosing not to wear a mask when it's optional. The other adjustment to that policy will define the return on day six option for, so somebody who tested positive, they could come back on day six as long as they had either a negative PCR test, a negative antigen test, or a doctor's note, and with that return with one of those three items, there wouldn't be any additional quarantining, you know, or masking that was exceptional, that had to happen different than any of the other children that were eligible to be in the school. And those are the salient changes to 1648.11.
So I believe that it is just a minor adjustment to that policy, so I would ask our attorney if that satisfies for second reading, or do we have to make, we really didn't make a substantial change.
I agree. It's consistent with why you have two readings, and so you are free to act on it without going backwards and doing a first reading again.
Okay, so the Policy Committee would recommend that we approve that as a second reading tonight. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Bierman.
You're welcome. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Arminio? Or any comments?
I just, I do just want to comment on the putting in those extra measures for having our children return on day six. To me, as an educator, I want my children back in school, in front of me. And I feel like those extra measures are restricting our kids from coming back on day six. I feel like it's going to be difficult to get a doctor's note. It's going to be nearly impossible to get a negative PCR test. And it's going to be also very difficult to get a negative antigen test on day six. So I just feel like by putting those in that policy that we are making it extremely difficult for our children to return. And I don't think that's fair to our children, and I don't think it's fair to our parents who want their kids to be back in school.
Anything, ma'am? Yes, Ms. Bierman?
So I think one of the items to remember is that we are now also in this policy giving the superintendent that flexibility to watch the numbers and pivot on this. So as we see us go from yellow to green, the number's going down. Mrs. Chanley can speak to what she would personally do, and Dr. Lehman, but I would think we'd have district support that's always going to try and do what's best for the children in getting children back in school and getting educated as soon as possible in a safe way.
Ms. Arminio?
And we also decided that we would only worry about containment with red, right? And not orange?
On masks.
On masks, right. So we changed that a little bit. Yeah. So we've lightened up on the mask issue.
Mrs. Chanley, would you like to explain your reasoning for the recommendation for the policy?
So fortunately, and I agree with Ms. Fabiano, the, our main prerogative is, and our main decision is to bring children back to school. But the children that we're talking about in this particular situation are the children that have tested positive. It is not in any way reflected to the close contacts. So close contacts return on the sixth day, and there's no need for any type of questioning or questionnaire or anything. With the children that have tested positive, they are or were contagious. That, excuse me. That being said, it is important that we try and keep everyone safe, and we were very uncomfortable, and I'm not going to get into and repeat it because it's something that went on and on, but we were very uncomfortable with the shoulds that were required of us. So this was a topic of conversation over and over again, and I respect everyone's opinion. And I feel that we have to make decisions that, and it's not a personal opinion necessarily, it has to be decisions of what we believe are best for everyone's child. And because these individuals that we refer to were the ones that actually did have COVID, they were COVID positive, we are hopeful that one of those three avenues would be available to them. Fortunately, the numbers are very, very low. And we, I feel, I still feel confident, that is my recommendation. It is not personal. It is not necessarily even my personal belief system. My statements that I make have to be what I believe is best for everyone's child. So I do feel very strong about it, but I have great respect for this Board of Education, and that is why you have voting power. So although I make the recommendation that I feel is in the best interest of everyone's child, you also have to make the decisions what you feel is in the best of everyone's child, and therefore, that is why you have the voting capacity. And I have great respect for that. I will let you know that I'm very happy about the recommendation to move forward, that masks will be optional in alignment with the mandate being lifted by the governor, but we also will be awaiting more, we hope, guidance in what's going to happen with the situation of you now come back, nobody has to wear a mask because it's optional come March 7th, and if someone had tested positive and we hadn't put in the extra precautionary measures, what would that mean? And to be honest with you, I do not know. We are hoping that we're given appropriate guidance that makes sense, makes sense, through the CDC, the Department of Health, and the Department of Education that goes along with the removal of masks. So I greatly respect what Mrs. Fabiano said, and from a recommendation in my position, I stick with what my recommendation is. And once again, like I said, it cannot be in any way my personal beliefs. It has to be 100% coincide with what I feel is currently best for everyone's child. But I definitely respect people that don't agree. So I wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Mrs. Ratner?
I'm sort of in alignment with what Ms. Fabiano said. I guess my concern is, when you look at the three different options to come back, and I'm glad that we are giving multiple options, but with a PCR test, we all know that you can test positive for several months. So to me, that doesn't seem like a viable option, you know, because most people by day six are still going to be testing positive. You know, with an antigen test, I know most of the time, not all the time, but a lot of them are being done at home now. And so, you know, we're basically relying on, you know, consistency from parents administering these tests unless we are requiring it from a doctor's office. And then, you know, in terms of the doctor, in addition to being hard to get to a doctor, because I know for a fact that there are doctors that are not seeing patients when they have COVID, I also feel like there's, every doctor has different, you know, comfort levels in regards to what's going on. So you may have a doctor that says, "Well, you're still coughing. We need to keep you out for a week." And you may have a doctor that says, "Well, you haven't had a fever. You can go back no matter what." And I guess, you know, I just feel like there needs to be a consistency amongst all the students and the schools. I know that we had a grave concern, I shouldn't say grave, but a concern with the nurses, you know, having a checklist because, you know, their numbers were just so high in January, and I totally understand that. But it seems like they're much more manageable now, and I'm wondering if that's something that might be able to be revisited, if the nurses have been contacted on, you know, I guess reconsidering that idea.
Just that, if it is moved tonight and approved tonight, we can always revisit it. But as Ms. Bierman said, again, it's, we're pivoting in the direction of having the superintendent, you know, make those similar decisions as soon as we get some clearance and some, you know, hopefully, it'll be a moot point by next month.
Okay, anybody else?
I actually just had one other quick question, and this is simple. For those students who still want to wear masks, will we still have them available at the school if they need them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Anyone who wants to wear a mask, by all means, we will accommodate them as we have for those all along.
Okay, yeah. Because as we know, we have extremes in our wonderful town, so.
Okay. Do we have any other committee reports this evening?
Yes, I have a curriculum.
Ms. Belko?
So the Curriculum Committee met on Wednesday, February 9th, and we had a great presentation about the graduation requirements and assessment updates from the state. The state has a new exam that they're going to be providing, and it's called the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency. We had a very lengthy presentation from Ms. Gasko and the rest of the supervisors about the different, the different assessments and how they're rolled out and all the different things. I urge you, parents, to please go out and see, look at the video, because I can't do it justice here in a two-minute curriculum report. The second item on the agenda for the Curriculum Committee this month was the Monroe Township High School Club Application Process. If many of you remember, there were several clubs that were presented to us in the January meeting, and the committee had some concerns about the application process and what the things were. And the administration went back and discussed and came up with a plan for a new application process for clubs at the high school. It's a very thorough and efficient plan, and the committee was very pleased with the moving forward of this plan that is going to bring clubs in September of every year. The students will have a whole process. They'll do the present, the high school principal, and, oh my God, I never remember his name. I'm so bad. Mr. Colallo, thank you. It's terrible. But Mr. Colallo, they will, they did a great job of seeing that. So again, I urge you to go out and look at the video for the Curriculum Committee and see exactly what it was that they presented, and I'm sure they'd be happy to answer anybody else's questions on that. That's my report.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Belko? No? Okay. Karen, you want to do the Finance Report?
I will.
Sorry, can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to commend the supervisors for the effort that they put into that presentation for the board members. And I want to second what Mrs. Belko said, that it would be very beneficial for parents, especially high school, who have high school-age kids, to see that, to see what changes have come across. COVID had, you know, really affected us in certain ways, and the testing, standard testing was impacted. I feel like they did a beautiful job that night explaining it to the board members, and the parents could also benefit from that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, Ms. Bierman?
Thank you. Finance Committee met on Wednesday, February 9th. There were four items on the agenda, and they're relatively brief. First is the Sourcewell Purchasing Consortium. It was introduced by Mr. Feldman. He informed the committee that in working with Dr. Lehman and Mr. Gorsky, in an initiative to control printing costs, he is recommending that the district join the Sourcewell Purchasing Consortium, which offers Xerox quality toner cartridges at 10% to 20% less than our current vendor. There are no fees to join or obligation to stay. It's Agenda Item I under the Business Administrators' Report today, a resolution to allow us to have an arrangement with this Sourcewell Purchasing Consortium, and the committee was fine with that. Second item was a monthly review of the attorney fees. We were provided with the invoices. Told for the month of December was $17,103.50. The committee made a request to get spreadsheet-oriented data on a monthly basis moving forward that would kind of bucket and categorize the amount so that we could see by category how the money's being spent, if it's on personnel issues, or Oprah requests, or contracts, reads, et cetera. And Mr. Gorsky will follow up on how to get that data and how to present it. Third item is the Heartland Solutions Food Service Equipment. This was carried over from a previous meeting. It's a proposal for hardware and software to upgrade the cafeteria point-of-sale system. There's ample cash and retained earnings to make the purchase out of the cafeteria fund. And I think it's Item G under the Business Administrators' Report. We are recommending that the resolution be passed, the hardware in the amount of $37,556 and software at $6,718. Mr. Gorsky also provided a budget update. All appropriations were inputted into the system. All revenues were projected for next year. Currently, there are many large appropriations estimates still being refined. It's still in very preliminary state. Currently, the budget is $18 million over cap, but it doesn't sound as alarming as that sounds, because out of that $18 million, 11.5 is construction projects that we would not normally put in the budget, but because we didn't know where the numbers were going to land, we asked Mr. Teig to put it there, and then we'll get that down to, usually, it's $2 to $4 million, but we'll see where things land once all the numbers are in for what the state aid and the rest of revenue is. Mr. Gorsky informed the committee of the state budget address and state aid release have been delayed by one week. I believe now the address is scheduled for March 8th, and the aid is supposed to be within 48 hours of the address. And there's a calendar included in the agenda for this month that kind of lays out, you know, the steps from the time the address is made and the aid is awarded, and how we'll step through the rest of the process. Do you want to add any color to that?
No. The only thing I would like for the public to understand is the budget calendar is one of the first thing the boards, the board engages in in the budget process in December. And generally, we have the budget calendar projected with all the important dates of the committee meetings and the board meetings, the release of state aid, the statutory requirement to get the funding to the school district and the award in 48 hours. But, you know, it does get changed as these late announcements from the state have become more common. So I would, you know, recommend to the public to frequent the district website, go to the Budget section. You'll see all of the to-date information on the budget process. Thanks.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Ms. Arminio?
I think Mr. Chiarella is also going to mention this in his report for Buildings and Grounds, but since it's in finance in terms of the food service, you have the, could you just repeat that, the new hardware?
The hardware and software. You want the dollars?
Yeah, separate, please, because I have a reason for that.
On the hardware, it's $37,556, and on the software, $6,718.
Okay, and the hard, the hardware is going to be for a while. We should, what would the life expectancy of that?
Madam, the last hardware for the POS system was installed, I think, in 2014. So it's expected to be about that.
And I know this is an upgrade. Then we have the 6700, but we were also told that there is, there is a yearly fee after this. So every year, I don't know if you were told that in the meeting, but there is about a, and Mr. Chiarella, I think it's like $5,000.
$7,500.
$7,500 yearly fee beyond that. So for this budget year, you know, that's the number, but we will, we will have to budget for years following. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Bierman? No? Okay. Mr. Nikotinsky, did you want to do the Personnel Committee Report?
Sure. On February 9th, Personnel Committee met. We discussed the vacancy list, the exit survey, and we had a continuing discussion about the organization scan and the 504 Secretary-Sarbor Agreement, which is on the agenda tonight, and the District Advertising Facilitator Drop Description, which is on the agenda tonight, which we posted after the meeting. And that's it.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Nikotinsky? No? Okay, our next committee report, Mr. Chiarella, Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation?
Yes. We had a report on February 8th, and we had quite a few topics. So I'm going to read as little as I can, but I'm going to, I still have to read because I don't want to miss anything here. What I'd like to do is cover the first one and then go over the demographic study, if that's okay with everyone. So the, our first topic was grounds care contract bids. The committee reviewed the bid tabulation results for the annual grounds care maintenance contract, and we concur with the administration's recommendation to award the project to Pleasant View Landscaping. They've been, they were the successful low bidder, but they've also been our, they were the low bidder years ago when we first hired them, and we were having some issues with our landscaping, groundskeeping contract back then. And we accepted the low bid, and we were nervous about it. Mr. Teig will attest to that. But this Pleasant Valley has done really well for us, and so we're, you know, we're going to go with them again. I'm hoping that we go with them again. You guys will be, it's on the agenda to approve. But the next thing that we had was the demographic study by Haber Associates. So if we can, I'd like to have everyone, you know, the full board be able to look at that, and then also, you know, our residents.
If I may, I'm going to ask Mr. Teig, our Director of Facilities. He's going to facilitate the report, and we provide it for you, the exact report that was provided to us. And both Dr. Lehman and myself are going to make ourselves available in case we need to interject, or if, after the report, there's anything that we wanted to be specific about.
Good evening, everyone. As Ms. Chanley mentioned, Superintendent Chanley and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Lehman will be joining me. We'll be walking the board through the enrollment and demographic study provided by Ross Haber and Associates. This matter was reviewed, as the chair mentioned, at the previous BGNT committee meeting, a draft version of this. The report starts out with the executive summary, which essentially gives an overview of the township and the demographics for the township as a whole. And this data is essentially taken from the 2020 census. Gives you an idea of the population in the town and the various demographic subcategories of the population. The report rolls into kind of a 10-year overview of enrollment, I'm sorry, not of enrollment, of the district as a whole as it relates to enrollment. Table 2 shows that projections with this methodology in the past have been within 1.78% accuracy. So that looks at previous enrollment, projecting forward. And the reason you want to look at previous enrollment, you want to establish what's known as a cohort survival method. The demographer uses that in preparing the report. So the cohort survival method looks back at a group of students several years back and follows them through the school system. Just because a student enters the school system, say, in kindergarten, it doesn't mean that that student stays with us the entire time. So the cohort allows you to determine how many of those students follow through the system. So that's a major component that the demographer uses. They also look They also look at what's known as live birth data for the town, how many children are being born in the town, how many of them become school-age children, and how many of them follow. The live birth data, moving back from the census data, will tell you how many of those children will arrive to us at kindergarten, and then the cohort tells you from kindergarten on how those students kind of survive through the school system, how many of those students do we maintain. That methodology, coupled with what is known as the Rutgers Report, those of you who are familiar with demographic studies from the past, recalling, referencing the Rutgers Report. The New Jersey Department of Education requires that demographers reference the Rutgers Study. The previous Rutgers Study had been done in 2006. It was recently updated in 2018. Copies of that study were provided to members of the committee for review. It is an exhaustive review by Rutgers University of housing and housing trends throughout the state. It is broken down to counties and towns. And what it allows for the demographer to do is to determine and project accurately what they can expect to get out of new housing in the town. For example, a three-bedroom condo in North Jersey might produce 1.7 kids. A three-bedroom condo in South Jersey might only produce 1.2 kids. So this study provides guidance to the demographer. It also goes a little further in that the demographer looks at what we refer to as Monroe-centric data, and that is, look at historical data in the town, look at what is forthcoming, and find out from the town what we can expect to get from said townhouse or single-family home. So there are three main areas that we look at in the report for guidance. The first is Table 3, and this is district-wide enrollment history and projection without new housing. So in other words, what has happened in the past five years and what is happening projected for the next five years, if there was to be no new homes built in Monroe. And what that data shows is that you would actually be losing children in the district. You would actually decline by 327 students overall in the district if there was not to be a new home built in the town. Now, the census data that we looked at, the cohort survival, and more importantly, the live birth data kind of guides that. And essentially, what it says is, a family that may have been in, say, Mill Lake Manor for years, and in a three-bedroom home, had three children, you're seeing more of a trend that that, as that house rolls over, they're probably moving in with two children. So that's where you're getting the decline in what you call the organic growth. You're losing 327 kids. So then, in a town like Monroe, which is continuing to grow, you have to say, okay, what are we going to get from housing? Now, that component is provided through assistance with the township. Township Business Manager Alan Weinberg and his associate from planning, Joe Stroyn, were extremely helpful in guiding Dr. Haber. Superintendent Chanley and I were able to sit in on a meeting with Dr. Haber and representatives from the town, and they provided all the data on planned developments and approved developments for the town, and they provided that guidance to Dr. Haber. We talked about the Rutgers Study and how many children you can expect from that three-bedroom condo. Well, Mr. Stroyn and Mr. Weinberg were able to show what are you getting in Monroe, make it a little more Monroe-centric. So of the housing that is projected, again, within the next five years, you are looking at, and this includes affordable housing, because folks were inquiring about that, you are looking at realizing 447 additional students from the new housing. It's important to note that there are several large developments, primarily out in the Route 33 area, that although planned, have not, in all cases, made it through the entire approval process, some are actually in litigation. So those are not planned for us to see children from them within the next five-year window. Those developments are identified, but again, children are not identified to come to us in that five-year window. And you might ask, why five years? Well, that's a standard set by the New Jersey Department of Education, and there is really no rationale for that, other than they don't want districts to project out too far and overbuild for something that might not come, so they look at a five-year window. So again, you're looking at additional students of 447 from the housing. It's not as simple as saying, okay, 447 minus the 200 that we thought we were going to lose organically. Now, this is where what I'll refer to as an algorithm of demography steps in, and Dr. Haber, using this methodology, distributes those students across the board, and where we will see them. So they all don't start out in kindergarten. The net result of what is projected over the next five years is 214 additional students is what we'll be looking at. So that's the third component of the report. So you might ask, what is the purpose of the demographic study and why was it done? Well, the demographic study is a very necessary component to what is known as the Long Range Facilities Plan. The New Jersey Department of Education requires that every district maintain a long-range facilities plan, and it is mandated that it be updated every five years or five years since its last approval. Monroe's last long-range facility plan update and approval from the DOE was 2017. So the district is obligated to have it updated this year, regardless of whether or not they decide to proceed with a referendum, everything. It is a mandatory requirement. So the enrollment data, the demographic study, is turned over to the architect, who plugs that into the Long Range Facilities Plan, and then that gives you guidance in terms of, on how students, you've heard us speak of in the past, and can then let the board be guided in decision-making for future growth. At the end, this is just some of Dr. Haber's work distributing to her school without hazard. So it's simply his work product to back up what is in the report.
Correct. And I think what... Absolutely. So what usually happens, anything that is part of a presentation, which will eventually become part of a vote, is provided to the public after the fact. So, but, so if you'd like, I mean, as far as copies are concerned, I mean, that's something we could definitely discuss. I think it's, I agree. I think it would be appropriate to provide copies. Absolutely, so it's something you can read. What I could let you know to make you feel a little bit more comfortable, because I totally respect how you feel, because you want to be able to know what it is we're talking about, so the demographer's report is based upon all the information Mr. Tagg just explained. So you have to have an algorithm, you have to have the Rutgers Study, you come up with them. So for example, in the committee, a lot of questions were asked. If you have an opportunity to go and watch it, it might give you some specifics if you go back. So Ms. Arminio specifically asked, could you provide us with what that algorithm or what that code is under the Rutgers Study? We put it in there. So bottom line is, we're going to come up with, and of course, this is only based upon the information that is given to us, 214 children as far as growth in the next five years. I think it's very telling that we live in a district in which we're growing, 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 but as we sat down and had very meetings, many meetings regarding this, we are at a point now where we need to legitimately look at what our needs are for expansion in buildings and/or new buildings in general, based upon the maintenance. So what does that mean? So you have a middle school that was built for 1,200 students. We have just close to 1,800 students. So that's maintenance. We need to now finally, I was actually pleased to see that the numbers weren't as high as we thought they were going to be, because it is our goal, and a lot of this, like you said, you do need to have in front of you, so I apologize, and we'll see what we can do moving forward to always have the documents readily available, because it makes it more convenient for the parents, and I agree with that. So the, what we're looking to do is to say, in addition to the 214 students, where are they going to wind up? So I think, and I do apologize, the sheet that we're looking at shows you the totals from today of 2021, 2022 to 2026, 2027, what the numbers look like, and the total growth for the district would be 214. So you might ponder and say, well, only 214 students. What do we need to make all these expansions for? Because we're so far below and making do with less for so many years, that these expansions are what we needed 10 years ago. So that, that's the, the crux of just giving everybody an explanation of why the demographer's report has such great value, because it's not for us to say, well, you know what? When we revamp Apple Garth, let's make it a 1,400 school, because look at the growth over there. Well, we don't know if that's really true, and that is why we use this report. So based upon that information, and I know that you just have to go with what I'm saying, because it's hard for you to read, and this will be made available immediately upon the end of this meeting.
Sure. That's not a problem at all. So, so basically, the, he has to follow guidelines, which I do like, because as Mr. Tagg said, you know, why five years? Because the state says so. Why the Rutgers Study? Because the state says so. But we do utilize information that's unique for Monroe, because as you can see, there are communities out there, which you will be able to see when you go online, that we do acknowledge, but for purposes of this report, because there has been no approvals to date, we can only go by the information that was provided to us at the meeting. And then, I will say that Mr. Weinberg, and I do appreciate this, did follow up with a letter to me with additional information that I did share with the entire board, because I think it's important to say, we could easily say, how do we know that information is valid? We have to make assumptions that information's valid, because we have to move forward. In order to move forward, we have to be able to utilize numbers, and the numbers have to come from somewhere. So we have to go with the numbers that we have.
No, we're out of order.
Yeah, yeah. I'm speaking to, I went, I apologize, I went a little bit out of order because...
There will be time during public...
Yes, there's going to be time. I wanted the public to feel comfortable that we acknowledge what you're saying. So I do apologize.
It's okay.
I just wanted to make sure that we hear everybody's concerns, but the point of this report is to say that we utilized the demographer, we made sure that everything was done to the letter of the law as far as the state requirements, so that when we come up with the numbers that are then plugged in to whatever pre-referendum services, whatever movement we do, we wanted to make sure that it was acknowledged. And of course, when I sit down and then we go to public forum, you can ask your questions. You're very welcome. So, I'm just trying to think of, is anything else that would be appropriate to hit on? Dr. Lehman, is there anything else that you... I think that some of the key things also, when we talk about class size and we talk about need for classrooms, I think every building is unique. So at a high school level, because everything is about sections, so every classroom could give, you know, eight sections or seven sections for the day, and then you multiply that out. In a middle school, because everything's teams, every team, you have 18 teams, so therefore, you have four classes going on at one time, and then elementary goes by class size, and I think that Dr. Lehman could also speak on that.
So when you see the document, a chart like this will guide us and the architect in identifying how many classrooms may be, may need to be added on to, say, the Apple Garth project. So if we're looking at 200 students, or we're looking for 20 students in a class, you identify 10 classrooms. If you're at 220 students, you're still at 10 classrooms, because you're at 22 students per classroom. So that's why this, this type of breakout will assist the architect in projecting the size of the project, and then he'll meld that with the state, the state model, or the state-designed parameters of a school, and that's a square footage piece based on how many students. So that's the core of, you know, how we would look at this from an educational lenses, designing classroom space in terms of how many class, how many students you have in a classroom. So if we, if we say, oh, I think there's going to be 205 students in a grade, and there's really 210 students, for us, that's a semantical piece, because we're still looking at the same amount of general education or homeroom classes. So when we, when we look to nitpick some of the numbers, we're really looking for large groups of students that would significantly impact how many big classes we have to, have to create. If we're looking at the difference between 200 and 210 students, that's really nominal, specifically, we're looking at, you know, class sizes of 20, 21 students, things like that. That's all.
Does anybody from the board have any questions for Mr. Tagg, or Mrs. Chanley, or Dr. Lehman on the demographic study? No? Ms. Ratner?
I know that it was mentioned about the cohort survival and the students that remain in the district for their entire education. Does it also account for students who begin in a different district and then move into Monroe?
Mr. Tagg?
Yes, the cohort, again, tracks students historically and looks at how they survive through. Again, that kindergarten student might not make it all the way through. Students might leave in the fourth grade, fifth grade. That's where the kind of the algorithm steps in and the demographers work.
Right, but my question is, it's looking at students that start in kindergarten and leave in fourth grade. Is it also addressing students who may not enter until fourth or fifth grade?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And then I guess my other question, when they're looking at it, and this is really more exclusive to our current scenario because of COVID, but does it look at all students of that age or only registered students? Because I know right now, more than normal, there may be more students being homeschooled or in private school that may eventually reregister. So I guess is it accounting for those children as well, or is it just the students that are currently here?
Yes, it works off of enrollment in the district, and it is driven by the October 15th ASSA report. That is the overall enrollment for the district. So that's what drives this.
Okay, so it's the students that are enrolled, not students, I'm sorry, that live in town?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Tagg? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Tagg. Mr. Chiarella, was that the end of your committee?
No, not yet.
Okay.
The next presentation, we'll, no, just kidding. The next thing that we had was design idea, group architecture proposal for the pre-referendum services for Apple Garth School Edition, and the renovation to the Monroe Township Middle School expansion, and the addition at the Monroe Township High School. So they went through that plan with us. The, the bottom line is that the, they're giving, they gave, they provided us a general overview of the professional services that would be needed for us to be able to move forward with a referendum for April 2023. So with some of that, you know, time is of the essence, because once we move past the, you know, the, that drop dead point, we now are moving that referendum ahead another year. So we just want to, we, we're trying to remain on schedule as much as possible and still have, you know, get community output, input, board input, and things like that, so that we're doing the best we can. Two, have a referendum that's as inclusive as possible, but also mindful of the fact that we haven't passed referendum, any referendum in the last, in the last few years. So we need to also be conscious of cost. So to say, hey, let's, let's just, you know, we've done that before. Let's put everything we absolutely need into a referendum, and then it fails. And then where are we again? We're just, we're kicking the can down the road, and we're, we're, our kids aren't being housed. So we've tried that, it failed. We've tried to reduce it and, and do different variations, and those have failed. What we've, what we're trying to do now is create a referendum that, that has, that satisfies our needs and for getting as many students as housed as possible, and has the greatest possibility of maybe being passed. So, you know, that's, that's what we're, we've, that's what we're trying to do, and that's what we've tasked them to do, so that our plan is something that we could actually get people to buy into. So the, the committee supported putting forth the resolution for that proposal, so that'll be forthcoming. We had some, we had Dr. Higgins explain stop-gap interior classroom expansion for the graphic arts classroom at the Monroe Township High School. So they gave us an overview of the project, and, you know, how that would be configured, how many, you know, that, that would give us some classroom space. And again, it's a stop-gap measure, it's not a final, this will solve all our problems, but we're trying to, we're trying to go through and make use of as much space as we possibly can in our schools, so that we house as many students, so that, again, so that the cost is reduced for our residents, so that we can maybe get a referendum passed that'll take care of more of our needs. This will be done by our team, our own facilities team. The work will be done by our, by our employees, so that will save money as well. Then we discussed Monroe, the Monroe Commons status. So Ms. Chanley is going to, well, did go to the Jamesburg Board of Education, have a conversation with them about, you know, is there any, do they have any room, or is there anything that we can do? So that's, you know, that's still in the works. It doesn't look like there are, there is much space for us to be able to utilize for what we need for pupil personnel services. So we're also looking at extending the lease with the owner of, of Monroe Commons until we have to be out of there. So the, our current, our current lease is set to expire in May 2022, so it's really important that we, we find space. I think that there were some outside-of-the-box thinking, you know, with, and some plans that we could, that were possibly entertaining for the existing Board of Ed office, which could give us some space in the basement. You know, obviously, there'll be a cost to that, but that's something that we're looking at maybe being able to do to save this, the, the current cost, which I think is like $6,000 a month, which is, you know, that's, if we could do it at the board office, we'll have one output of funds to get the space up to standard, and then we won't have that, we won't have the lease anymore. But that's still in the works. And then, as Ms. Beerman said, we had the Heartland proposal. So I just wanted to mention a couple of things with that. The, we currently pay $5,000 a year for our software, and as Ms. Arminio stated, the, the new software will be $7,500 going forward. But it's not one of those things like, oh, we're just, we just have a lease, and, you know, and we're... and we're paying this to keep it on or whatever. It's actual software that has to be repurchased every year in order, in order to be used. Now, Ms. Schaller gave us a pretty thorough review of the software and the needs and why we have to do this. Some of the things that I wasn't aware of was that the registers go down, they have to be rebooted. There's, there's time delays on the transactions. All of that stuff costs time, which then, you know, it causes delays. We, we have, as we all know, we have overpopulated schools and we need to move our children through that, you know, through the, the lines, launches as quickly as we possibly can. And this will help us expedite that and to help us get a little bit better at that process. So I, I'm recommending as well, and I know Ms. Bierman did too, that we, that we, we pass this tonight. I think that's it. That was enough.
Thank you, Mr. Chiarella. Do we, does anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Chiarella's report? Okay, then we are done with our committee reports. Our next item on the agenda is our public forum for agenda items only. If anybody wishing to address the board can come to the podium. You have four minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Do we have anybody? Mr. Parab, uh, Dr. Parab?
Prakash Parab from 33 Dana Drive. Good evening, everyone. I know that today we have interviewing the superintendent. This is my view. I think our current acting superintendent, Chanley, I have been watching her. I have been, I know her for several years and I'm watching the way she is conducting meetings. I have watching the videos of the committee meetings and all. She's doing a good to excellent job. She has been here for several years. She knows our town. She knows the politics. She knows how to handle it. So I feel that whatever you are doing is excellent. So I think over it, it is good to have internal candidate also to give a chance because they know everything, so things, decisions, explanation goes, moves forward and is good for our children. Now you get a new superintendent, the process starts again. Their contract is three years. By the time they learn, it is two years is gone. Board is up, fed up, public is fed up and the superintendent is gone. So think of it. Now, as per the enrollment, I looked at the enrollment. I put it on the Facebook also. In last four years, we added only 112 students. Okay? It doesn't mean that we are okay. Our schools are overcrowded. For example, middle school is 137% of the capacity, means 37% more children. Apple Garth and Oak Tree, 168 to 70%. Remember, 70% over capacity. High school, 38% capacity. So the current plan, what it is doing is, the current students, what we are having, they are crunched in. The expansion at the current locations is allowing those students to accommodate. We are not increasing the traffic by adding more 800 students. No, that I'm reading on Facebook. The fact is, we are allowing current students more to accommodate. And in next five years, we'll get additional, you know, children are leaving, children are adding, so we are going to have 214 new students. Not a huge. So I like the current plan, use the current existing area to accommodate the children, building new school, new staff, new maintenance staff. Get the children away to the playground, cost money for the taxes. We already lost two referendums doing that. What I think is what is happening is our, our township went to the growth, okay? Now, many students are graduated, parents are leaving out. So the families which are leaving out, families coming in, it is reaching an equilibrium. So we are reaching a plateau and then that's a, so think of it, why? And what is happening is we have many senior communities coming in, okay? So that also, that's why the demographic results shows 214. Last seven years, you know, for several years, we were told we cannot expand the current middle school. We cannot build on the current middle school. Now with new elected members, new superintendent, we are persistently asking correct question and happy to know that we can expand in current middle school. Having a high school, middle school together, having playgrounds here, auditorium here, gym here, we can share and Thompson Park, it is good. Instead of building far away, busing the children and all. So this plan, I want parents to look at it. We don't want another, you know, member, referendum to fail. This is a smart approach.
Dr. Parab, your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Pradeep Malan, 4J Place. I won't take like all the four minutes. One thing is like, who is our current Oprah officer? Because around, in January meeting, there was a discussion around like, who is the Oprah officer? And there was change in responsibilities. But on the, on the district website, I still don't know whom to send an email if I have an Oprah request. So I request administration to update it. Or if you can answer it now, that's fine.
Mrs. Chanley, would you like to?
So currently, under the current organizational chart, which is still presently appropriate, Mr. Michael Gorski is still the custodial of records, depending upon when the board actions go through. If there is a change, then that change would be referenced and would be corrected tomorrow.
Okay. That explains like why so many emails are coming up on the Facebook. Good, good, thanks. The, the, another one that I want to appreciate this board is, finally, they are segregating the voting, whether we are voting on each item for 10 people vote or nine people vote. And if you recollect, like I've been very vocal about this because everybody, if, if everybody is their own, in their own limits, and then this should have been done like since the day one of Jamesburg represented on this board. And if there is any legality or like, if anybody questioning this, so I'll ask them to just go to the ethics committee or like complain to the DOE or like, take it to the court. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim S. O'Toole, Allison Court, Monroe. First, I want to commend Ms. Fabiano for doing what the previous board failed to do for all those years, and that's approach the, our Senator Linda Greenstein to see if in fact she get in here and, and, and give us a plan on what her plan is to get us some good, fair funding. So I commend you on that. Great job. Also wanted to talk and speak about the, Dr. Parab said it best, the three failed referendums prior to the, the schools looking to expand. We have a foundation here. And if anybody knows anything about building, if you have a foundation, it's easier to build up on a foundation as it go out on a foundation. It's just that simple. So I have to applaud this board for putting this referendum or to be referendum together and this addition onto the, onto the schools to accommodate our students coming in. And the numbers, they sound a little low to me, but I guess the, the studies don't lie, okay? I mean, things can happen. I mean, we can have an influx, you know, we, somebody could be bought and somebody could be building 7,000 houses in Monroe pretty soon. You don't know. But we have to go with the studies of what we see from the engineers. And as far as building onto the schools, if, like I said, if anybody knows anything about building, you have a foundation, okay? And in this foundation, it's easier to build up and out, okay, than it is to build new. And we're just talking about schools, right? If we were to build a new school, we're not talking about the infrastructure coming into that school, whether they need new piping, new, in the roads. You need new roads going in, parking lot. You never, you don't know. So this is the most, in my opinion, okay, and what I can hear and see and what I've been reading, is the most cost-effective way for the taxpayer, okay? We have had three failed referendums, okay? And that costs a taxpayer's money. This referendum needs to be passed, brought up, passed, and we have to build up on our schools because it is the cheapest way to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Steven Ryback, 23 Riviera Drive. I'm assuming from what I heard today, thankfully, that you've got together with the state, with the state, with the town on the numbers for the incomings. I know with the Buildings and Grounds Committee, there was, there was some disparity there between the numbers that you were hearing from the town and the numbers you were hearing from the demographics report. So I, I hope that we get those. Am I right? No?
Yes, we did. You want to address that, Mrs. Chanley? I know you reached out to-
Yes, absolutely. I don't think the word disparity would be correct, sir. I think what it was, was I think there was a different understanding of perspective. So what happened was, we went ahead and we met with Mr. Wein, Mr. Weinberg. And we met with the other gentleman who's the town planner, I believe, with Mr. Tag. And they provided us with information and a very healthy conversation ensued during the building and grounds. So rather than disparity, I think it was questions, which I think were very valuable. And the questions brought up the concern about various different developments that may be in the works because the property is owned.
Right.
So I heard what everybody had to say, but I was very strong and forthright that that may all be true, but we could only go by with the information that was given. I'm going to assume perhaps that Mr. Weinberg maybe watched the, the committee meeting because he immediately wrote me a very detailed email. And in the email, he included a letter with appendices, which referenced exactly the question, which came, came across like a disparity, but it was more like, it was more like the spirit of, is this accurate? Will they be building more? Do we have all of the numbers? Was everything accounted for? And he confirmed in writing, as I shared with the board, that the numbers that he has provided are the accurate numbers and that we did put them and we will provide it. We did put there to show you that there can be buildings, but for purposes of a pre-refereendum and for purposes of moving forward, it is understood that we do not believe that we will see those children within the next five years.
Okay, thank you. I, I was just curious about that.
Sure, certainly.
I, I just have some comments and some questions about a, a possible referendum. Your plan and plans we've heard before. I don't think you did a traffic study. And we're going to be increasing the size of the middle school, which is already large. We're going to be increasing the size of this school, which is already large. The traffic is very difficult in this area. It was that way before the pandemic. I'm sure during construction it'll be worse. It might be smart to do a traffic study to alleviate some tension or some, some questions in that area. I also think that, it's funny, I was talking to a professor from Toro College about the two schools and he said, you may want to consult with an educational consulting firm to see an impact on education when you have such two large schools next to each other. I never heard that before, but I just figured, let me throw that out because it was kind of interesting. Some concerns I have, when you're planning the referendum, I noticed you're not bringing in the BA who has years of expertise and incredible knowledge in this area. I think that's really foolish not to do. You're also not using Mr. Rutske, who's a financial analyst. I'm asking, especially Mrs. Skirby and I know Mrs. Abora, you stood at this podium asking for input from the public on a referendum. I haven't seen that yet. I haven't seen it discussed. I know, Ms. Bora, you raised that question and I hope this board would consider doing that. I think it's important to bring the public in on anything that you're considering doing. When you're looking at a building and you're increasing the size of the building, you have to consider the common areas that aren't being enlarged, like hallways. What would happen in emergency egress when you have that many more kids in a, in a school and they have to get out quickly? That could be a problem. Concerning Apple Garth, I see I have a little bit of time left, so I want to go fast. I'm concerned because I've heard from engineers, architects and a facilities director that you can't repair Apple Garth. It has to be replaced. That the building, when you open the halls, and I know I heard your architect say it, when you open the walls, you look on, under the ground through the piping, you'll find things that'll cost more than you ever anticipated and would raise the cost of the referendum considerably. I think that's something you need to consider before you finalize any plan. I just don't know if Apple, I think the building behind Apple Garth, which is something that was considered by a, a previous board, you can leave the kids in Apple Garth. You could build behind Apple Garth. It was done at Mill Lake. It was successful. And you don't have to have trailers. I don't know if you got a quote on how many trailers you would need with your plan. I think that could be a considerable amount of money. And I think it's something that you, you need, you need to consider before, before going forward in this. We were gonna build a new school behind Apple Garth, an addition on Barclay Brookside, an addition on the high school. Take the sixth grade out of the middle school and spread, spread the sixth grade throughout the district. That would decrease the whole area here as far as congestion. It would lower the registers, the numbers of students in the middle school and I think would solve the problem. It would be more money than you're considering, but I think you've got to be open with the public and show them something that would answer all the needs that they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time is up. And just to make some comments on that, I do not believe, and Mr. Tag is here, I do not believe it has ever been said by our facilities director that we would have to tear down Apple Garth and it is not able to be renovated. That is in- Mr. Tag is sitting right next to you. Mr. Tag, would, would you like to make any comments to that? Because it's not okay to misrepresent what our administration and our facilities director has said in the past. Mr. Tag, if you would like to address that or you, you, you know, it's up to you. If you use the microphone.
Yes, so there was discussion years past with boards on options. One of the options was to tear down Apple Garth, as you know, and build a new school on the site. You do have the ability to do additions and renovations on Apple Garth. We have discussed this over the years. We've cautioned the board that it has been delayed for many years, so it'll be substantial work. I have 110% confidence that the architect, the board has engaged, Design Ideas Group, the Architect of Record who designed this building and many others for the district are the top-tier professionals. And everything they would design would meet current codes, safety standards in terms of evacuating buildings and those kind of things. I have no concerns that it would not meet all the safety standards. And yes, Apple Garth can be, receive an addition and renovation.
Thank you, Mr. Tag. And no, I'm sorry, you're out of order. Next speaker, please. Excuse me, Mr. Ryback?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Edelman. I'm at 48 Cherry Blossom Drive. I just want to start by saying I was happy to hear Ms. Chanley say today that she recommended for masks to be optional for our students effective on March 7th because I am in favor of all of our students being, or our parents being able to have the option to choose whether or not they want their child to wear a mask to school. I have read countless studies about all the negative effects that masks have had on children, their mental health, physical health, when yet there have not really been many studies showing the effectiveness of masks on students in schools, actually stopping this word of COVID. So one question I have, and you know, I'm hopeful that the board will vote to approve that tonight. One question I have is, will that also be for the, the teachers? Will teachers also be able to, to have the option to wear masks or it will be for teachers as well? Okay, just because I had not seen that written anywhere. My last other question is, in regards to students being able to return to school on the fifth day with the three things, what is the policy for teachers? Are teachers able to return to school on the fifth day? Do they need to provide the same documentation, meaning an antigen test, you know, a negative test or the doctors note if they have tested positive for COVID?
Yes, Mrs. Chanley?
The answer is no, and I will tell you why specifically. The problem that we had with the children versus the teachers, and it's not because the children are more important. That goes without saying. The reason is that adults can eat separately, remove themselves. They are not in any way having to be doing different things than the children. So if we follow, and it's the word should, because that's what it comes from. The guidance is should eat separately, should leave their masks on during activities where other children are removing their mask. That is not a concern for an adult. We believe that adults make good choices. They are adults in that regard and they can remove themselves. So they can go into a separate area to eat, they can distance themselves and there is no comfort level of them being separated from their peers because they are adults. And that was the reason why we did not require that.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Jeremy Marcus, 27 McFadden. Even before I start, you, there's a caveat about the Cali score. So the Cali score is completely rigged and manipulated. It counts positive tests, not people. So if I test to go back to work six times, five positives, one negative to go, get me go back to work, it counts as like a plus five, however that works. So it's, it's completely arbitrary. It's not a good measure at all. Also, the PCR test was pulled by the CDC at the end of December last year because it can't differentiate between COVID and the flu. So that's two big things that are, potentially would put masks back on my kids that need to be discussed and really looked at. So we're gonna look at CDC science, New Jersey Department of Health science, and none of it really jives. That's the problem. So, so really, there's, there's never been any science, only compliance. So you have to follow the rules. They make no sense. What we've witnessed across- What we've witnessed across the last two years is really, it's nothing short of a crime against humanity, and more specifically, state-sanctioned child abuse. So for those of you who don't think this is, if I told you three years ago, we're going to close schools and put kids in masks, separate them from friends, take away their activities and their concerts and their social interactions for something that is of less risk to them than a swimming pool, you'd have had me committed. So someone got paid for doing this to the kids. And I'm going to keep asking questions until I find out the answers. As per the New York Times last week, Murphy had a focus group after he almost lost in November. And the group basically showed that he was, people are done with this. And it shows in the polling numbers. So he actually heads the Nationwide Democratic Governors Association, big convention a couple of weeks ago. So that's why you see all the dominoes falling. It's all politics. It's midterms. So, you know, we see that. And just so you guys know, I hold, there's no animosity towards any members of the board, any ill will. This is always business. It's never personal with me. So the business has been my kids. I've done my job with my three. They've had no restrictions, none, zero, since day one. Do whatever they want. So by default, it's then all of the kids. So the truth is definitely going to come out. It always does. So I'm begging you guys to be on the right side of history with this one. Be proactive. All COVID restrictions need to be ended immediately without caveat. Because we're using arbitrary numbers and faulty tests and rigged data. If you're also going to invoke the science on a district level, like, we need to see it, right? If you have data that they're spread certain places, we need to see it. Because it's not going to come from Murphy anymore. He's throwing this back onto your laps. So it's going to make these meetings rougher, unfortunately. So I do have a few questions. Have we ever examined or explored the penalty for defying any of Murphy's executive orders? Has anybody done that? Because I know in Marlborough in January, one member of the board said that Murphy can withhold funding and the state can take over the district if we defy any of those orders. Is this something that can be confirmed?
I believe that fund state funding could be taken away from the district, yes.
Could be. So they can pull funding. So, okay. So this now goes into the next questions. The S R money, the ARP S R money, does it come with strings? So if we do, we don't do A, B, and C, can they withhold the funding?
So the categories in which we spend the ARP S R funding have, there are amounts that are funneled in certain areas. So we get pre-approved based on our proposals to target, whether it's social, emotional, health, or some of the categories a little broader. You know, you can use it on PPE or cleaning and stuff like that. In terms of if you don't do X, you don't get the funds? That's not something I've come across yet.
Okay, so we don't?
I'm not going to say it's not there, but it's not something I've seen yet.
Okay.
We funnel our proposals through the categories in which they offer the funding allocations through.
Right. My line of questioning really is, can they withhold funding if we defy any of the executive orders? And, you know, we have home rule. So, and if that, if the answer is yes, or we believe so? Because at this point, two years, like, we need to know the truth, at least what you guys know as the truth. And you may not have ever been told. So that's the other thing. Yeah, so this is just the last thing I have. It's a quote from Alexander Solzhenitsyn, who wrote The Gulag Archipelago. It says, "We know they are lying. They know they are lying. They know we know they are lying. We know they know we know they are lying, but they are still lying." And they have never stopped lying for two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. I'm going to touch on three topics tonight. But I'm going to preface that all three of my topics center around the word transparency. We have people on this board, old and new, that have been at this mic before many a times, that have pushed always for transparency and having the public input. Whether it be in the superintendent search, whether it be in building new schools, whether it be in kids returning home. We've always, I say we, but many of you have been up here pushing for transparency and the public's involvement. And I certainly am not seeing that to date on the topics that I'm going to discuss. So the first one is a school referendum. I'm confused on the demographers report, because I watched the BGNT. And I saw, I heard comments around, we can't trust the numbers. We have experience with the town being political. So are we comfortable with the numbers now to be able to go forward with this tonight?
Mrs. Chanley, would you like to?
So a lot of those comments were made. And I want to say thank you, because I was not a party to that situation. And I guess they had concerns that there was political influences in the numbers that were provided, so that we had accurate data. And my statement was, I am very comfortable if you wanted us to increase the numbers. And we came up with a percentage. But we can only go by the numbers we were given. So I'm going to only speak for myself. And then, of course, the Board of Education members, I guess, will vote or can speak if they so choose. Based upon the information I was given, and then the follow-up letter that was provided, I have to believe the numbers are accurate, because I have no reason why I have to say they're not accurate. So the numbers that were provided to me, they're not my numbers. They're not, they are our numbers for our children. But those were the numbers and the discussions that were part of the numbers when we met in person. And then with a follow-up of a letter and appendices provided to me that I shared to the board. So the answer is yes. I have, I am taking, I am making the decision to believe they are accurate numbers. That's my decision.
But you were the one that said they were political. And what changed?
No, no, no. I'm sorry.
I think, I almost can quote you. I think you were the one that said, you know about this political.
I'll be happy to-
So what has changed in the numbers?
What has changed?
That we now believe the numbers?
Okay. What was told to me, I did not say I knew they were political. It was said at the BGNT meeting.
I think you said political. It came from you.
No, it did not. Respectfully, I-
You made a comment to it. But, so are we believing the numbers in the report now or not?
Okay. If I may, and I, we're not going to take your time, because they stopped the clock. Sir, you are absolutely correct. There was a very strong conversation that went on. I will be happy to go back and watch it. The political comments that were made were told to me that they were political in nature and that the numbers could not, the numbers were not accurate. I stand by the fact that if people are telling me they were political, I have no reason to just believe the board. But I have to go with something to move forward, because we cannot stay stagnated. So therefore, I am believing that the numbers are correct. And that I do not have any belief or understanding what the political undertone or overtone was at the time, because I was not a member of this board, nor was I a member of this administration, except to be a middle school principal. That was not included.
So we're asking this board tonight to act on a major referendum on a belief? But I'm still not understanding. What is the belief? And I don't think the public understands. What is the belief?
It's not a belief. It is what the township has provided us through their business administrator. We have a demographic study that shows us the numbers and the estimates that for the, for what we, the growth that we're going to have. It's not a belief. It is what the township has provided to the school district.
So based on those numbers and what the enrollments actually are going down, why aren't we giving more time to speak, you know, to introduce to the public plans that say, well, we're not going this way. We're going this way. Here's the numbers. We got the demographic report one week before this meeting. And it sounds like they're back and forth with the town, and we're not even there. And we want to move forward on this tonight?
The referendum discussion has been happening since before COVID hit. It had, was put on hold during that time period, and it had picked up after. It has been a discussion of what to do since 2018, when the last referendum failed. There has been a lot of input from the community during all of those years, with those failed referendums. Everything for the last 10 years, we've had several ad hoc committees. Everything has been looked at and has been used, that data, to come up with this plan. It has been discussed at several BGNT meetings. There have been many-
So quite frankly, if you're going based on the ad hoc committee, this plan that you're introducing was not the plan that the ad hoc committee came back with?
No, it was based on information that has been compiled over the last 10 years.
Right. So things change very rapidly. So to say that you had public agreement three years ago before COVID, and we have it now, without going to the public and introducing the plans, I think is reckless on all of your parts. But I'll move on. Because I only have a minute and 45 seconds. Next part, transparency, superintendent search. We've had, the last time we had the posting out there was November 23rd, was when it was taken down. How do you find suitable candidates if we're really going to move forward with this? If the job isn't even posted?
We had a process that we were following when the-
Can you tell us what the process is?
Yes, it has been, it has been discussed several times. There was an ad hoc committee formed, I believe, Ms. Arminio. Was that in the November meeting?
Do you want me to give a brief?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we started when we, when we were told that Dr. Alvin was leaving. We immediately, within the first week, put out a job description for both acting superintendent and superintendent. We gave, we actually had a very, we gave like two weeks, or I don't know the exact time, two or three weeks for the acting superintendent position, because we knew we had a time constraint. And we had an open application for superintendent. We put the advertisements out at the same time. We closed the acting superintendent applications, so we could review those. And we left the superintendent, we left that open until November. We got 35 applicants. Some were specifically for acting superintendent, some were for the superintendent. We closed that because of the amount of the applicants. We wanted to close it and go through what we had. The ad hoc committee was formed the same night as we closed the application process. And we went from November until today. We went through all of those. And we did have some interviews of certain candidates. So it's-
How many interviews before the time you closed it to now?
I don't, I don't, can we discuss that in public?
You can give a number.
Yeah. We had, for acting superintendent, we had two interviews. And we, for superintendent, we broke the 35 down, because a lot of people were not qualified. We broke the 35 down to nine. And then we asked five. We called five people. And to date, we had two people comply. And we have a, we have two more to-
Three. We had three.
We had three interviews.
I'm sorry. Three, sorry. Three interviews today and two more we're planning on. And then we had the resolution tonight to just reopen it.
Thank you, Michelle.
So we have an acting superintendent who has a contract that doesn't have an expiration date. So how long can this go on for, before someone or the board can wake up and say, maybe we want to switch things out? What is the process? Because I haven't been able to find a superintendent in Monroe that's never had an expiration on their contract. Stop my time? How long will this go on?
Until we find a qualified candidate that we are happy with. And we feel is going to bring the best experience to our district.
How much do we pay each year for the job posting site?
Mr. Gorski, would you have that number?
I remember seeing that recently for an Oprah request, but I don't have it committed to memory. So I'm sorry, Dominique.
I made the request. I wanted to see if you knew. It's $1,800 per year, no matter how long you have the job posted, or if you have it posted 5,000 times. So why isn't it posted? Harvest resumes.
We did.
We did. And you got three interviews. Great. So again, I'll leave it on, I have one more question. What, how much is the spend for at-home remote instruction right now? 2022.
As of February 1, $401,861. That's home instruction, all-inclusive.
What was it in 2021?
I can give you a comparable year, which is 2018, 2019, full school year. Previous years, when we were full remote, the home instruction numbers aren't comparable, because we had students that, if they were on home instruction, they were already remote anyways.
Never once has this board ever talked about those numbers. And I bring it up because we're putting policies in place, like, not, not one other district around us that wants to keep kids home longer, but you don't want to talk about the numbers. And we're always talking about bleeding, bleeding, taxpayer dollars. Here it is. Make them take five COVID tests. Make them stay home for 20, 20 months, 20 weeks, whatever it is. But you see what's going on? And then to say, oh, you know, teachers, oh, you know. My wife's a teacher. It's preposterous when you say, oh, teachers, you know, they eat in a separate area. So they're, you know, they can't spread COVID. Come on.
I would just like to comment on that. This board took action to allow for our students that were home, either quarantining or had COVID, to receive continuing education. I am proud of what we did here in Monroe Township to make sure that our students had education while they were home. Yes, there's a cost to it. But I believe education should have been available to our students all of that time. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Gail Dupain, 356 C. Old Nassau Road in Rossmore. I want to squelch a rumor mill that's, item that's been going around town. I am a member of the Commission on Aging at the Senior Center. And there has been nothing proposed to Karen, who's the director of the Senior Center, because I asked her last week at a meeting, to bring children over to take the Senior Center. So that's just something I want to kill for now. And I also wanted to ask Mr. Chirel. You mentioned using the board office space. How many classrooms or how many children would be able to be put in that?
Please direct your questions to the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. I'm sorry.
Mrs. Chanley, would you like to speak on that?
The board office was just out of the box thinking for the People Personnel Service's adults. So there's approximately seven adults, not children.
Oh, okay. Just, I didn't know how big the area was.
No, 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 no. It was a workspace.
Okay. And then regarding the referendum, has it ever been discussed, since you haven't done too well on your, on the two or three that I've been in town, to break it down into two sections, A and B? I mean, I was on a board that did that years ago. And apparently, you can do that and put in what you want in A, and then maybe B, Apple Garth, something that really needs to be done. And things like that would fall down, maybe. Unfortunately, maybe A wouldn't be passed, but B would. And that is your main concern right now? Has that been considered, Madam Acting Superintendent?
If I understand you correctly, I believe that exactly was what occurred in this district. And it was question one, and I apologize. Question one, question two, question A, question B. And it did fail.
It both failed.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Just checking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Scott, 7 Fernwood Lane, Jamesburg. I have students, obviously, here in the district. The fact that you've spent over $400,000 on home instruction The fact that you've spent over four hundred thousand dollars on home instruction is absolutely mind-blowing. And that if you think that the home instruction that you're giving these kids when they're quarantined, when they're in close contact, if you think that that is sufficient, you are fooling yourselves, okay? I know children who lost almost a whole month of school for being, for fourteen days every time they had a close contact, even though they'd already had the virus, but didn't get a test because they had it because their whole family had it, and lost a month of school. And what they were given was two hours of home instruction after school hours, after two o'clock. Meanwhile, parents work full-time, both parents and most households do. And teachers are constantly emailing, checking to see what the schedule is, and they're given two hours for each class, I think, per, whatever, per class or whatever, and you think that that's sufficient? You're fooling yourselves, okay? They were better off getting the virtual instruction streaming live with their other students in the classroom during the day when they were all home being quarantined than your two hours of virtual instruction with, with the COVID quarantine nonsense, okay? I'm happy now that we're now down to five days and they can go back after six after their tests. But like several others have said before, none of this makes any common sense and we are completely screwing up these children, okay? And the fact that you've spent twice as much money on home instruction that you have in the past, everybody needs to wake the hell up. You're ruining these children, you're ruining their lives with all of this. And, and you're exhausting money. And what you're spending it on isn't even good quality. So that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Tracy Belsamo, five Leila Court. I'm bringing up the same point. My child was out of school. She was told she had to be out of school because she was around children that were tested positive for COVID. Okay? When my child came home, I then had to make sure that she got a PCR test. Fine. Never heard from one of her teachers. Sorry, I heard from one of her teachers. And she's a sophomore in the high school. I heard from her elective teacher. Where are all her majors? Why wasn't her Italian teacher, her English teacher, her math teacher getting in touch with us? And I know a lot of you know about this because I made it a point to send an email. Once that email went out, the following week, my daughter, when she was already back in school, was receiving emails saying, when are you available? Why was my child getting asked to be taught when we're spending all this money, when she's already back into school? She lost five days of education because somebody forgot to let somebody else know that my child was told not to come back to the building. Because she wasn't even tested positive, she was in contact. So I would like to know why my child had to lose five days of school education over this. So somebody needs to talk to somebody else. Let the nurses know. The nurses need to let the teachers know. The teachers need to let the principals know. You guys need to be all on board. These are our children that are losing education over something stupid.
Maddy Ryback, twenty-three Riviera. I really didn't plan on saying anything, and this is more of a comment than it is a question. Driving, I realize that you need to use formulas when you're planning referendums. I one-hundred percent realize that. However, driving around Monroe, driving on Mount Mills Road where I live, driving on six thirteen, driving on thirty-three, driving all around, unless there's major attrition, I cannot imagine that there will only be two hundred and fourteen extra kids. It just does not make any sense. I just had to come up and say that. I personally taught in New York City. I taught all-day kindergarten. I had twenty-nine kids in my class, no help. It was impossible, and I honestly don't want to see that for all of you that have children in our schools today. And we really need to consider what kind of referendum we're putting up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Catherine Hunt in Rossmore, one twenty-one Lowell Lane. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I just had a question about the traffic study for the new construction for the middle school, and I was just wondering if we could see the traffic study.
Traffic study has not been conducted yet. If that is recommended by our facilities director and our engineer and architect, that will certainly be done. There is not one that is currently being done.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know because I know that from lots of other meetings that I've gone to, that things like the drainage and the traffic studies have to go into the decision-making process, you know, for any kind of new construction. So thank you very much. Do you know when that traffic study will be done?
This is not new construction that we're proposing.
Or a move? Yes.
Thank you.
Good. And any idea when that traffic study would be done?
It has not been recommended to the board to have a traffic study currently.
Oh, that's surprising. Okay, well, I'll recommend it then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Rocos. I'm Middlesex Boulevard Township resident and parent. Like many of us parents, I've gotten a phone call. My son is a close contact. I'm very disappointed with the way things are going with him having to be home quarantined. And even more disappointed to find out he was able to see a class picture and he was the only one that was quarantined. We have a major discrimination going on here that we can, that only certain kids can return to school, and we're discriminating based on vaccination status. How do you explain to a six-year-old that you can't go back to school because we don't want to take a chance on a vaccine that we don't know the long-term effects, which the CDC has said, CDC expects that anyone with Omicron infection can spread the virus to others, even if they are vaccinated. So we're allowing vaccinated students to return, but non-vaccinated not, even though there's, the CDC right here is saying it doesn't make a difference. And we know from the government websites that ninety-five percent of the cases in New Jersey are Omicron. So, I mean, I want to ask the board and the administration, what can we do? I know, I understand you're bound by certain laws and rules, but what can we do? I like the move coming up with the masks. What can we do to make it a more equitable playing field that all the kids can enjoy? I don't want to see my son or any of us, our kids, missing out on the Valentine's Day, the Hundred Day School, all the fun stuff. What can we, I mean, what can we do? I'd really like to see, as soon as practical, that you can drop the mandatory quarantining and, I'm sorry, make quarantine optional and remove contact tracing. And I'm sure the school nurses would love that as well. Can, what can we do to move, as the state rules change, what is the quickest way we can, and what is the board planning to move?
So thank you very much for your comments. As the, I'm going to make the assumption that now with the mask becoming optional, we're actually being put on the LEAs, so the local educational association's making decisions, we are making the decision here, if passed by the Board of Education, that masks now become optional. Dr. Lehman and myself actually had a meeting today to discuss. We are hopeful that once the masks become optional, the Department of Health and the Department of Education, after looking at guidelines from the CDC, I'm going to make the assumption some changes are going to have to occur. Because if masks are optional, it's going to play a, it's going to have a major effect on contact tracing and required quarantining. I cannot say what they're going to be, those guidelines, but I would be hopeful that within the next week to two weeks, we would get updated guidelines because it goes hand in hand with people not wearing masks.
Right. We move on one, we have to move on the other. I know other towns, Old Bridge, Millstone, Marlboro, I believe Monalve and English Town have, are in process of, or already moving forward with these, from what I have heard. Looking to see Monroe do the same thing, drop contact tracing. This way, we will not have to discriminate against children. Oh, you had the vaccine, you didn't. You have to quarantine, you didn't. But just, if you're healthy, and in our case, we're, we're good people. We gave our son a test just to be sure. And how do you tell a six-year-old without a, he's perfectly healthy, running around, negative test result here, and he can't go back? And that's, that's all you gotta say. Let's please do everything we can to, within the rules, move forward and get all the kids back in school as best we can.
Peter Tifano, ten Catherine Street. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars is what the builders that build in this town donated to the mayor and his candidates this election season. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars. If you think that they donated that money because they were just nice, you'd be wrong. They did that because this is an open canvas, Monroe, and they're going to build. And they're not going to just build for two hundred and something kids. It's not going to happen for a hundred and seventy thousand dollar donation. We have a big problem in Monroe. We have a lot of mistrust. We have mistrust because when this high school was built, the demographic report was obviously wrong. That's why we need additions. What are we going to do about it? Are we going to get fooled again? Because that's what, we're getting fooled. There's two seats empty right there. Did anybody on the board invite the mayor and his business administrator to come here and give this township confidence with those numbers so we could hear that come directly out of their mouths? Or that they hide in their office and have private meetings with people? Can you answer that?
I did invite Mr. Weinberg to come to our meeting. He declined the offer.
That's what I thought.
He did offer information that, you know, as of today, the developer for Marketplace North JSM Development has not submitted an application for final site plan for Section Two. I did ask if that's on the planning board agenda for next week. He said, as of now, it is not on the agenda because the application has not been submitted. The issue is, as I've stated, we went to the township with the demographer, Mrs. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, they met with them, Mr. Teague, and this is the information being provided to us from the township.
And, and, I don't have an argument with that.
If anybody would like to go to the council meeting and challenge that information there, you're most welcome to. But here at the Board of Education, we are doing our due diligence, we're being transparent about it, and we're reporting, this is what we've been given. They're showing us data, the demographer did their report. There is nothing that, there is no information that they have withheld from us as of today.
My, my statement was in no way disparaging the board and the work they've done. I'm sure you've done your due diligence and you can only go with the numbers you've been given. What my problem is, is we have a really, really needed referendum coming up. Despite how you think it should be done, it's much needed either way we go. What, what we need is confidence. We need this township to be confident that those numbers that you were given and that you're running with are accurate. And if they're not accurate, somebody needs to be held accountable that gave them to you. Because you can only go with the numbers you were given. So those two seats are empty, and they should have the mayor and his business administrator sitting in them so that we could hear it directly from their mouths and not second-hand from you guys, even though I believe that that's what you were told. So I think that an email should go out inviting the mayor, his VA, and the entire council. The entire council should be invited. This whole table should be taken up by them. Because the township needs to be confident in those numbers that they were given, honestly.
And as I said, I would encourage the, I would encourage all the residents to attend the council meetings, the planning board meetings, the zoning board meetings, to really educate themselves and to pose questions there at the township at their meetings that they hold. Everybody has the opportunity to go to those meetings. You can, you can find their calendar on their website. Like I said, I invited Mr. Weinberg here, he declined. He will be at the council meeting, so if anybody has questions that they want to direct toward him publicly, the best place to do that is at the council meeting.
And also, my last comment is, I find it absolutely disgusting that Linda Greenstein has refused to come to Monroe with this major crisis that our schools are in and the funding that we need. She definitely made it here at least four times that I know of, right before the election, for Boy Scout events, to do an home walk, which she didn't even walk in. She made her speech and then she left. She couldn't even walk a mile for a poor kid that passed away. And several other events, pre-election. As soon as she got everybody fooled and got them to vote for her again, now she's nowhere to be found when we really need her. And for that matter, nobody else is around when we need them. These kids are all unhoused. We need, we're in a crisis and we can't get any funding from the state or anybody to help us get funding. I went with Ken Chirella and I believe a lot of other people on this board to see Linda Greenstein in our office. She won't even come to the door. It's disgusting. And we keep electing the same people. I don't get it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Olesky, fifty Mayberry Avenue. Just had a simple question, but pretty important question. Just wondering regarding the demographic report. Has anybody taken, taken the previous one or two demographic reports that were prepared by the same company not that long ago and just put them side by side to see how consistent the numbers are that they're projecting now versus, I'm not sure if it was a year and a half or two years ago, and maybe even a year or two even earlier than that as well? I don't have that information, but I just want to make sure that somebody takes the time and sees whether or not what we're seeing right now is consistent. Because I don't think there's that, that many, what, new developments? Because I remember the chart in the last demographic report, and the chart looks the same as far as the listing of developments. Anyway, just want to ask that you take a look. I know I will as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Olesky, I know, Mrs. Chanley, you could speak to this point. The last demographic study combined ten years' worth of data condensed down into five years. If you want to discuss that further.
So one of the concerns that people had, which I agree with, was, was the accuracy of the demographer's report. But what happened was, and Mr. Teague also knows this to be so, as we discussed it, was because of the uniqueness of Monroe Township and the growth, which is very different, the state gave approval for the demographer to look at a ten-year growth span rather than a five-year growth span.
Okay.
So that would probably, what they did was they took ten years and they condensed it into five. And that, to me, I could see why, why they did it because they wanted the numbers to be higher because of such growth in this town in comparison to other towns. But the accuracy then would come into play because the numbers weren't within the five-year period, which is what all of the models go by.
Okay. And then it sounds like maybe that's part of the explanation why everybody's surprised to see the numbers so low, two fourteen or two seventeen, maybe?
I would agree.
Anyway, just a thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Olesky.
Hi, Sarah Aziz, three Lancelot Drive. This year, the district hired Ross Haber Associates to do the demographic study. The last demographic they, study they did was in two thousand and nineteen, and their report was ridden with errors. It took a month for Dr. Alvek and Mr. Gorsky to go through this report and fix all the typos and formula errors. And it was such a bad job that our district was able to get a break on the price. So in spite of that, the district hired the same demographer. And now, Dr. Alvek is gone, and the facilities department no longer reports to the business administrator. So my concern is, is if there were so many typos and formula errors last time and the number this time seems unusually low, there are probably some formula errors this time. And so I think it should be carefully reviewed. Furthermore, the middle school has been overcrowded for years. So naturally expanding it would be the obvious solution. The reason why no prior superintendent has spent the money to pay architects to draw up plans is because the end result would result in a five-thousand-student campus across a tiny stretch of Prineville Road, across from a retirement community and down the street from a shopping center and another retirement community. And it is, you know, and no traffic study's been done, and the traffic is already bad. And, you know, the district sent out a community, a survey throughout the whole community to ask the, everybody in the community, do you like the communications that you get from the district? What, where do you get your information from the district? Do you get it from Facebook? Do you get it from the newsletters? So we've sent out surveys about other things. Maybe we should send out a community survey regarding this plan. Because we have, right now, we're going to spend a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to DIG architects for pre-referendum services for a plan, and we don't really know what the whole community feels about it. And, you know, there's no remote participation of public forum. There, I'm sure there are a lot of seniors who live in Greenbrier who would like to voice their concerns in a public way, and they can't do that. Furthermore, I don't understand why we paid SSP architects and DIG architects for the same work. Both of them provided us with an estimate on renovations and expansions at Applegarth School. So why are we paying two different architects for the same work? They both came up with an estimate of about forty-four million dollars to renovate and expand Applegarth School. However, the DIG architects included a caveat. He said that if there was no renovation, if it was just an expansion, it would take about sixteen months. And he said that when you renovate a building and you start, you know, digging around the site, you can uncover much more, many more problems. And so the estimate is not a real final estimate. It's, it's actually the cost of renovating Applegarth is unpredictable and the time involved is very unpredictable. It could take years. And he said it would be very difficult to house the students while the renovations are ongoing. And in two, in twenty twenty, the facilities director said you could renovate and expand Applegarth, but the cost of doing so would probably exceed the, the cost of just building a new school in the back. So the cost of renovating Applegarth is totally unpredictable. We don't know what it is. It's risky. And the architect that you just recently hired said to make the construction be done safely while school is in session requires close coordination with both the principal and the business administrator, who's no longer in the BGNT meetings and who no longer oversees the facilities department. So why is he excluded from this when, you know, and why isn't he asked about whether Applegarth should be renovated or replaced since he's the one who supervised, the facilities director, for about a decade? So he should be asked. And finally, I know that we've had two failed referendums. It should be noted that both referendums had a twenty percent voter turnout, and so they were decided about, with about like twelve percent of the electorate decided whether or not we were going to build a new school. Now, we have mail-in voting. So we should be focused on building a new school- So we should be focused on building a new school because it offers more value than trying to renovate and expand Applegarth where we don't know what the cost is. We don't know how long it's going to take.
Thank you. Your time is up, Mrs. Aziz.
All right. So we should expand voter turnout. That should be the focus of the board.
Good evening. Doug Poey, 4 Tamarack Road. I want to thank the board for indulging the public the way you do. You allow the public to go on and on and on. You're very, very patient when I know you have other work to do this evening. And I am simply adding to that extended time. I apologize for that. I want to bring up something that really hasn't been spoken too much about. And that is, under the superintendent's report, item J, which deals with policy 0164. Ms. Arminio did make some remarks about that. It talks about the conduct of board meetings. And I had observed, and in fact, I had remarked upon it at one point, that during committee reports, often a motion would be brought up, and the motion would be voted on. And this was prior to the public having any opportunity to express an opinion on that. Fortunately, I did not see that occur this evening, and I was glad to see that. I did a little research in terms of Robert's Rules of Order, which this board says that you operate under. And during committee reports, a motion can be brought up, can be made, but the vote on that motion can actually be delayed to a later point during the meeting. And so I would suggest that you consider allowing that to happen. Those motions could be brought up, excuse me, in terms of new business. That gives the public an opportunity for input, and it gives the board members an opportunity to hear that public input before they cast a vote. In terms of your policy on a road forward, I looked at that, and I was absolutely amazed that that policy is 22 pages long. I didn't check it against all your other policies, but clearly that has to set a record. And I think you need to really rethink what you're doing with that policy. And I know that's a difficult job, and I know you were trying to spell everything out, cross your Ts and dot your Is in doing it. But it's an unbelievable piece of work in terms of being a policy. Most policies are a page or two. It's the regulations that usually go on into more detail. So I just want to mention that. Under the business administrator's report, item H, you're contracting with the DI group to do some preliminary architectural studies. And I don't want you to answer the question right now, but this is my question. Exactly what is that going to produce, and what will follow it once it is produced? I think that would be very informative to the public. So you can answer that question once I've finished here. I am concerned, and this was last month's meeting. I am concerned with the fact that there's a very large addition being made to the middle school and a very small addition being made to the high school. Yet it is the high school that has shown the most growth. I looked at enrollments, and I saw that between... Let me just... The actual average increase in enrollments over the past seven years. Okay? At the elementary school, that all the elementary schools together were increasing by 10.3 students per year over those seven years. The middle school was increasing by 30.9 students per year over seven years. But the high school was increasing at twice that rate, 62.3 students per year. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Poey, if I may, I wanted to address your comments about the policy of the board made, the 0164. It did get discussed in policy. I know that we are going to continue to discuss that. I actually brought up that exact scenario that you had mentioned about, you know, the public does have a right to speak before a board votes on something. And we have seen for several years that motions were being made in committee meetings, committee reports, and the public did not have the opportunity to have a say before the board voted. We have, as a board, tabled motions that have come out of committee reports, and we have allowed public forum to take place, and then we have then voted on those after to give the public an opportunity to speak on them. I think we all here on this board do value the public's input prior to us voting. And I know we are going to discuss that policy and possibly moving the public forum before committee reports. That was one of the suggestions that the committee made, and there was more deliberation. I know Ms. Arminio wanted to discuss it further. Thank you.
Good evening. Betty Sabarito, 2 Barrymore Drive. All of you are about to vote on a lot of different things, and I just want to thank you all because it's a lot of work for you guys to be up there. I know it's very time-consuming. It's a volunteer position. Each and every one of you, I've said this before, have the right to vote however you feel, and you are going to represent some of the public, and you're not going to represent other members of the public. But thank you for your commitment. It's okay to disagree on things and vote differently. But each one of you up there earned your seat, so take it. And I've been coming to the Board of Education meetings, every single meeting, for well over six years. We have been through five superintendents, whether they're permanent acting interim. And I'm perplexed at the fact that we keep harping over credentials and how long our interim is, because I don't remember that happening at all with Mr. Ventrello or Mr. Goodall. And on behalf of CPAG, which is the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, which I am the leader of, Mrs. Chanley, thank you for your commitment with us. We're very pleased with the way things are moving. We've seen in meetings your collaboration with administrators, with parents. You're making changes that we have been law and requesting, so we thank you for that. And we hope that whatever the board decides moving forward with our superintendent, whether it's an internal or an external candidate, we know you're going to do, you know, the best you can for our district. And at the end of the day, we have to work as a team. I think it speaks volumes, the amount of administrators that come to board meetings to support you, Mrs. Chanley. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else, we will close our public forum. The next item on the agenda is the... I'm sorry? Oh, okay. Take your time.
I've been writing this out. Am I speaking well?
Yes.
I've been writing this out and hopefully...
Name and address, please, for the record.
Can you hear me? Oh, Marlene Zarnowski, 29 George Washington Drive.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to read it and hopefully not sound too bad. "We may be done with COVID, but I'm afraid that COVID is not yet done with us." "I heard a lot of people express concern about kids being forced to wear masks and follow the rules and distance and all sorts of things. I haven't heard anyone show any concern regarding bullying." "And I remember from my days in high school, 100 years ago, that there was bullying. My daughter, when she went to school, there was bullying. And now I see it in my grandchildren's school. Bullying is now epidemic, especially the last few years. People feel they have a license to bully, as well as be vigilantes. And my concern is that if there's no longer a mask mandate that as soon as kids leave their parents' eyes, even if their parents want them to wear masks, they're ditching the masks. They're not going to wear them in school because somebody's going to make fun of them. Somebody's going to bully them. And when there's a universal mask mandate, the kids will wear the mask." "But I think you're setting them up to be bullied. I think just telling kids it's not nice to bully doesn't seem to work. And I just wish you'd pay more attention to this. As I said, I don't think COVID is done with us yet. I feel it personally because my daughter's a long-term COVID sufferer. She's 33 years old, and you can't just eat right and be healthy and exercise to avoid COVID. COVID, you catch it. Right now, the British Royal Family is suffering from COVID. Prince Charles and Camilla have COVID. I mean, they're not safe. I don't know who is. So my concern is that this is just going to be another flare-up of COVID, and we'll have to go back or just face the fact that our kids are going to be sick. And then some kids are going to get very sick. And if you've read the reports of what happens to small children who get very sick, it's not good. It's very dangerous." Anyway, that's all I wanted to say, and I just hope you will reconsider it and just consider the fact that these kids are going to go to school every day and be faced with someone who's going to threaten them or make fun of them or do both. And it's just not fair to the kids. It really isn't. I think putting a piece of cloth on your face is not the worst thing in the world if it keeps you out of the hospital or your parents or your grandparents out of the hospital. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Deborah Bianchi, 8 Hampshire Place. I... The percentage is really low on those kids, and I'm really here to speak for my kids. So I was leaving the house, and my boys knew where I was going. And they were excited because they're done. And as for being bullied, it's not the kids that are going to have the mask on, but it's going to be the kids wearing the mask bullying the other kids. So you can think whatever you want, but these kids don't want to be wearing these masks. They're fed up. They're not being taught because the teachers are more worried about their mask than they are what they're learning in school. They're there to learn, and that's what we want. Parents want it. The kids want it. They want to go back to normal, the real normal, not this. And this isn't real. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to make a comment. Our teachers are exceptional here in Monroe Township. They focus on educating our kids, and I just... I want to just say out there that there is... They are not more concerned with a mask than educating our kids here. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? All right, we will close the public forum. The next item on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lehman?
Yep, and I will do an expedited report to move the meeting along. I just... I thought it's important. I didn't mean to look at you specifically. But I thought it's important to recognize two groups that have... Last month, one made a donation for grants, and then one that will be forthcoming. So last month, the Monroe Ed Foundation, we accepted grant monies from them. We had several teachers in three different schools go through a grant-writing process and be approved for some grants from us. We will be attending... Ms. Chanley and I will be going to the schools and provide... Giving them certificates and congratulating them on their grant awards. We're going to do that next Friday. So thank you very much to the Monroe Ed Foundation for their generosity. And then something that we will be seeing on the agenda in the near future is an MTEA FAST grant. So it's about $18,500. And what they did in conjunction with some of our educational support staff is they are purchasing and donating to the district six 90-inch by 24 post-mount large wooden communication boards. So each elementary school is going to get... It's called a communication board. It's something that's designed for inclusion by providing access to the most common word students use so that all students may more easily engage with others on the playground at home. So this assists students with communication disabilities and challenges. So they... It's basically photos, symbols, images, pictures. And if somebody, if a student is looking to communicate with someone else on the playground, they can go up to the board and point to pictures and things. They're also donating four A-frame communication boards for some of the smaller playground areas, three vinyl communication boards for each elementary school, so that's 18 of them. We can post them inside the schools. And then we also will have access to downloadable and printable communication boards. So we can share those with staff. The speech teachers in each building will work with the students that could benefit from the use of this communication board. They'll show them the boards. They'll teach them how to interact and engage with the boards. All the staff will be exposed to the tools that we have. And the goal is more inclusion, and this is a big, huge step towards that. So very, very generous donation on behalf of the MTA. And you will see that on a future agenda. I just... We got some of the documentation and the things cleaned up this week. I thought it was important to kind of draw that to everybody's attention. So that's it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Lehman on his report? Okay, we will move on then to our superintendent report. Mrs. Chanley?
I want to first just acknowledge once again our Educational Support Professionals of the Year. They are the staff members that are sometimes behind the scenes and not necessarily in the front of the classroom, but they are a very important part of our community. And it was my pleasure to be able to be in this position at this time to be able to acknowledge them. So I did want to just mention that. The last couple of weeks, I made the comment, I used the term, "I was on my happy travels." So I just wanted to quickly comment before we go to the agenda items that I had an opportunity, as being a member of the Board of Directors for the Educational Services Commission in New Jersey, I was invited a couple of weeks ago, and I was able to fulfill the invitation by going to visit both the Center for Life Law Learning in Saraville as well as the Academy Learning Center here in our hometown of Jamesburg. And during that time, I had a wonderful experience, meeting with principals, walking into all of the classrooms, seeing fabulous programs, talking about curriculum, talking about things that we do similarly in our self-contained programs here, as well as discussing different opportunities that we feel we can get back to. I like the word "normal" that one of our residents used, getting back to the normal business of educating our children, both socially, emotionally, and academically. And that being said, we do have partnerships that we do through the high school with these two particular schools where our children go to the schools to engage with the other students. So I am excited and looking forward to starting that again, especially after March 7th, when "normal" becomes a little bit more "normal." And it was also very exciting for me to see a lot of my students. You know, that's always the big thrill about being in this position now is that I have an opportunity to see a lot of the students that were our students. My last travels ended in our hometown here. Well, I had an opportunity, and it's been something that's been planned for quite a while now, and we was able to come to fruition. I had a fantastic meeting with Dr. Valani. Dr. Valani, for those of you that do not know, is the superintendent of schools in our Jamesburg School District, which is our neighbor right here. And we had a trifold meeting. So the first part of the meeting, I had both my principals from the middle school come, and they joined us, and we were joined by their middle school principal. And we started talking about activities that Dr. Valani and I had spoken of when we met individually ourselves about a month and a half ago to talk about what we can do to start fostering the relationships that need to begin in the eighth grade. Our children will leave us in the eighth grade and will leave Jamesburg in the eighth grade, and they will then become the Monroe Township High School students. What better way than to bring the community together and then to start it in the eighth grade? Me having the opportunity and the knowledge base I do, because I was the middle school principal for so long, that I realized that we have a major eighth-grade trip, which is Frogbridge, as well as a time capsule project that is not in all... Done by all of our teams. We have six teams in the middle school in the eighth grade. We do it by two teams. I kind of suggested and prodded along the principals that we can make it a little bit maybe mandatory for other teams. And we want the Jamesburg Middle School students to join in. We feel it is extremely valuable that they start this relationship in both an opportunity outside of school and inside of school. And then the conversation continued with Avid. Avid is an excellent program that I was actually the coordinator of way back when, when I was the assistant principal. And it's something that we also have, that we share with Jamesburg. So these conversations were the conversations we were having, and we were very excited. So we are very hopeful that Jamesburg students will be joining our students to be a group of one for the eighth-grade combination trip, which I believe, I want to say off the top of my head, is like May 13th. I believe it's May 13th, I think. Yes. And that being said, or maybe it's May 20th, it's one of those Fridays. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to start building that bridge. Additionally, when the principals then left, we stayed and chatted for quite a while, and we're both extremely excited about the opportunity of us working together collaboratively. We are going to collaborate on our calendar. They are our students. They should be... We should have as close calendars as possible, so we're going to be collaborating on our calendar. She also texted me on the night that we wound up calling the delay, so she called the delay. So our goal together, and I think that we could both do it very, very successfully, is to truly forge this relationship, which has already been forged, and I feel it's on a very, very successful journey so that the Jamesburg children, who are our children beginning in high school, start feeling that collaboration, that team feeling in the eighth grade. And I feel very appropriate that I have the tools, regardless of what position I'm in, because I was the middle school principal for so long. And we ended our meeting stating that we would start out with, it might be bimonthly or it might be monthly, and I already had a conversation with Dr. Lehman, I had a conversation with the supervisors and I have a meeting next week, we have a meeting together, because we are going to then also look at the areas of academics and we're going to be having our representatives, our curriculum supervisors, meet with their curriculum supervisor, they have one for all content areas, as well as myself being present and their superintendent and their middle school principal. So we're very excited about this relationship that I'm proud to, proud to be a part of. So I did want to just provide that information. So it was, it was, it was nice, happy travels getting out of the office. And on that note, I will begin with, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through P for a ten-member vote.
Move.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments on items before we go to a roll call?
I'm a rookie, so forgive me if I'm wrong. My question is not on the personnel A through P, but it was just before that on the agenda, the virtual home instruction. I just needed a little clarification, Mrs. Chanley, on, in the middle school report of, you know, the virtual homes instruction, there were a lot of L slash S teacher names. So either there is a live stream or there's a teacher name. I was trying to understand, what does it mean when there is L slash S and then the teacher name? Middle school had certain only live streams and certain were L slash S teacher names. Whereas in other schools, there's a teacher name or it says live stream. So what does that, what does that notation typically mean? It is still live stream, but with a teacher name?
Because what that meant is it's possible that because they didn't, we want to make sure that the, the teachers were set up for the instruction, so there were certain children that got both.
They got both, that's why it's.
Correct. So it would be both. So for example, and I understand the L slash S is live stream, but if it said L slash S and then had a teacher's name, it means that the live stream may have began, but then when the appropriate teacher was assigned, the instruction then continued.
Understood, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Mrs. Ratner?
I also had a quick question regarding the home instruction. Dr. Lehman, you had mentioned the cost for, was that for the 2021, 2022 school year or was it from January 1st through February 1st? I just wanted to get clarification.
That number is since the beginning of the school year.
Okay. And does that include the cost of the live streaming as well or is that solely?
That's everything.
Okay.
Yep. Up to February 1st.
Okay, great.
Anybody else have any questions?
So we're just voting up to P, which is page 10? Is that where we're at?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Gorski, may we have a roll call?
Personnel items A through P, this is a ten-member vote, so we will call on everyone. Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Fabiano, uh, Ms. Fabiano, excuse me? Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Biermann?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Personnel items A through P has passed.
It is recommended the board approve the attached personal items K through AN with a nine-member vote.
Motion.
Second.
Madam Chair, I believe it's Q through AN.
I didn't say Q, I apologize. I apologize. Q through AN, please forgive me.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I do, I have one quick question. I see that there is a new position for, and I believe it's middle school, it's called Academic Achievement Club. Is this club new and are we? Okay.
It's been around many, many years.
And what is, what does this club do, Mrs. Chanley?
It is, it would be the equivalent of a drop-in center, like we have C-MAT for math at the high school, and then we have English Lab at the high school. So what it does is it allows our certificated teachers to remain there and work with the children, whether it be preparation for a test, working on a project, help with the writing process and so forth.
And so we just have, have more of a need and so we are hiring new people because there is more students enrolled in the club? Because it's a new position. There are two new, I, I believe there's two.
Could I, can you give me, tell me what letter?
It is A-M, Agenda Item A-M. And there are two new positions for the Academic Achievement Club.
M as in Mary?
M as in Mary, yes. Am I reading it right? Yeah, I think, yes. Yeah, it's the, it's the very bottom of A-M.
I'm going to assume that you are correct. I will look into that, but I would definitely imagine what happens is we have so many positions that we have allotted in the budget and if there is no need based upon the student numbers, they do not fill them and they leave them and then they put them back in. So they wind up being new every year in that regard.
And these are, these are existing staff members.
Correct.
Right. Thank you, thank you.
Mrs. Ratner?
I just had a quick question about AI, which is a approval of a professional development trainer. Is that an additional position or is that a, a stipended position or is that a replacement position?
Page 12.
These are just hourly rates to train. This is compensatory ed trainings. So this is just supporting our current staff in terms of preparing for compensatory education and things.
Okay, so, so this is just someone who would be doing, well, that's AJ. I was looking at AI.
Hour and a half a day for two days a week.
AI.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
Yeah, split on two pages here. Oh, that's just a PD trainer. So every year, we identify staff to be trained to train, like in-district trainers. So the, this person is going to be conducting a professional development class. In order to do that, we have to approve them as a trainer. So we're approving as a trainer. This is a current staff member.
Okay, because I know we also have, I guess, like, people who are primarily in charge of professional development.
Yeah.
Is that what this is or this is something?
These are two, we have two staff developers, right? They kind of oversee training and mandatory trainings for all 1,200 staff members. This is a teacher who is going to be giving a class to other teachers. So we have to approve them as, as an in-district trainer. This is one of our teachers.
Okay, so every time, I know, I think it's called turnkey, right? So every time someone would turnkey something, they have to be approved in order to do that?
Beginning of the year, beginning of the year, you see probably thirty teachers get assigned. This teacher's, the need for this class or this teacher has evolved since that initial wave has been approved.
Okay, and then just, just to kind of go along with that, do we provide all of the hours for the professional development in-house for teachers? Because it's been a couple of years, but I remember it was twenty hours per year, you need the hundred hours over five years. Do we still provide that completely in-house?
Our professional development program, the way it's set up, when the teachers move through the process, they acquire the amount of hours that they need each year. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? Mr., Ms. Arminio, do you have a question?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Gorski, can we have a roll call?
Personnel items Q through AN, nine-member vote. Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Biermann?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Personnel items Q through AN has passed.
It is recommended that the board approve the attached, what action, items A through K for a ten-member vote.
Moved, so moved.
Second.
Ms. Arminio?
Madam President, I would like on J, the board approve the following policies for first reading. I would like P 0164 removed since there was no revisions to that yet.
Okay.
From board vote, please.
Okay, we can have that removed from the list of policies?
And, and then I have a question.
Okay, Ms. Arminio?
On E, it's recommended that the board approve the following job description, the district advertising facilitator. Is, is that going to be a stipend or is that going to be a new person hired to do that?
It's a stipend position.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Ratner?
I'm sorry, I ask a lot of questions. I wanted to find out with the Road Forward policy, I just wanted to confirm since we are going mask optional March 7th, that does not include transportation, correct? Because that's a separate, that's a federal law. Okay. And then my other question was just regarding the second read for P 8310, which is public records. I guess I was just curious, I guess, why there's being additional, an additional stipend given for the position. And also I was curious why the initial person is, I guess, a confidential secretary, but then the alternate would be, I guess, Dr. Lehman instead of Dr. Lehman's secretary? If those can just be answered.
So the first question goes to the fact that we wanted to move it to the superintendent's office and the additional hours would be appropriate to compensate financially. And it is our hope that having the opportunity to have someone working on it through a stipend position would also eliminate the billable hours, no disrespect, that goes to Forzio Group. So that would be, that's, answers your first question. The second question is, we are comfortable with making the backup, the Assistant Superintendent's Confidential Secretary as well, and we do plan on getting her the training, but for purposes of total transparency and the fact that she was not spoken to and he was sitting here, we went ahead and we gave it to Dr. Lehman. And that's exactly what occurred.
I appreciate the honesty.
No problem.
Ms. Bora?
I have a quick question. In the list for the field trips, the FBLA trips stood out to me because compared to all the other trips, I think the amount on that was almost $6,000. Usually other trips are a few hundred dollars and then busing costs. Is, is this considered? I can repeat my question. It was from, with regards to the field trips?
Yep.
The FBLA trip, the cost is significantly higher than all the other trips. Is there a reason for that?
So all the costs represented for a trip like that are student cover costs, all those costs, the students are fundraising or they're compensating them, you know, they're, they're paying their own way. It's the way that's represented on there. Sometimes when it's submitted, everything's included in terms of just the way they present it. But when we approve it on our end, the costs are all zero. We are contractually obligated to cover the compensation for the staff members involved. Though when the students go on a trip, especially clubs like that, everything is taken care of by them or their families.
Thank you very much. Yeah. And on item H, just from my understanding, how many teachers will benefit from that approval for the elevation professional development?
So that, that's for ELLs, our, our English language learners, that's a program, professional development kind of system that we're going to put in place. We just approved our three-year ELL kind of self-assessment plan. That, this is something that's kind of an outgrowth from that, in terms of being able to manage the students, manage their progress and tracking. And also provides, the rollout of it will provide the staff that works with any ELL student, tools and strategies to help educate those students.
Understood.
So immediately, it will be our ESL teachers. As we upload, sync everything, any sheltered instruction teacher, which is one per grade level in all of our elementary schools, next year Barclay, Brooklyn Brookside included, as well as teams at the middle school and high school. So it's going to have a very broad reach as this rolls out more and more.
Understood, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions now? Mr. Gorski, can we have a roll call, please?
Board action items A through K, ten-member vote. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all but on item K for the Road Forward, no.
So noted. Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Okay, I need to recuse on A and F. Am I able to recuse on one individual or is it the entire item?
You could recuse on one individual.
All right, for David Ratner. And then for item K, I'm going to vote just no on 8310 and 1648.11.
Yes on everything else, ma'am?
Correct, thank you.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes to all.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Biermann?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Board action items A through K has passed.
It is recommended that the board approve board action items L through Q for a nine-member vote.
Motion?
Second.
Are there any questions?
I do have one question and I apologize, I keep coming back with more and more. It's item Q, as per my last copy, I don't know if it's still item Q, the dialed Action Agency Assembly that is for Woodland. My question is, are we approving this as, as something that'll be paid by the general fund? No, we're just approving an assembly.
Yep, you're approving the assembly, approving them to come on site. That actually is a Woodland Mill Lake PTO-sponsored assembly.
And do we normally approve every assembly in other schools also? Or is it just because it's the nature of this one?
It's the nature of this assembly. We wanted to bring it, bring it forth this way. Sometimes if, you know, the Grand Faloons, which is a Middlesex County kind of piece, wouldn't necessarily pass through here, but something like this absolutely would.
Right. And if I can ask, so typically these assemblies are paid for by PTAs and PTOs, is that right?
Oftentimes, it depends. We, we've also hosted assemblies, like each, like if it's a guidance counselor kind of driven assembly, they have a, if it fits within their school budget, they may bring in a three-screens video presentation, like an anti-bullying or something like that. So it really depends on the nature of it. This is a larger assembly and that's why the Mill Lake PTO is picking up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Arminio?
I have a legal question on the travel expenditure resolution. There are six board members on, I'm sorry? I said N, I'm sorry. N? Page 21, it's, and then if we go on, it's for our, for the.
We're not moving.
We're not there yet.
We're not that, we're not that on yet?
Nope.
Okay. How about, okay, sorry, I'll wait.
That's okay. Any other questions?
I think there, I'd just like to make a question on H, as recommended, the buildings and grounds.
I think you have the.
The proposal, I'm sorry, on H.
We're still on the superintendent's report.
I'm still.
We're still on the superintendent's.
Okay. Just tap me on the shoulder.
It's okay, I did it last week.
It's five o'clock this morning, sorry.
Go ahead.
Anything else? No? Okay, Mr. Gorski, may we have a roll call?
Yes, bear with me. I, I heard the first and second, but I couldn't see with the mask on who moved the second.
I motion, allow a second.
Yes, I have a second.
Thank you. Board action items L through Q, nine-member vote. Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Beerman?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Board action items L through Q has passed.
I thought we'd already had that vote, sorry.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our business administrator's report. Mr. Gorski?
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through I be approved by 10-member vote consent roll call.
So moved.
Second. Is there any questions or comments? I actually have, yep, I have one, letter B, the bill list. I would like to amend that to be minus the bills to payable to David Rubin as there is questions regards to those.
Madam, on that item, that dispersment has been made. So, the law firm of David Rubin has been paid for that as I communicated in the email, and we are seeking reimbursement from New Jersey School Board Insurance Group for the slight overpayment. So, the dispersment has to be approved, whether it's here or at the next meeting, and it's already been paid.
Mr. Gagliardi, would you like to comment?
Yeah, okay, well, first of all, I don't, I would never tell the elected board that it has to approve an expenditure, but my understanding is that there were some legal questions. I've discussed them both with the superintendent and with the business administrator separately. If it's true that it was paid before it was submitted to the board, then it doesn't matter whether you're acting on it tonight or next month. But consistent with my discussions with the administration, I will review what I've been asked to review and I'll provide my advice to the board, and the board can take whatever actions it sees fit.
What letter is that?
Letter B, the bill list.
Okay. So, what we're saying, there's, there's a discussion about one bill in the entire list.
Yes, so I would like the amount to be amended to minus, to approve minus the amount of the bills to David Rubin. As per our legal counsel recommendation to us.
Madam, may I ask the wisdom of removing that paid bill from the bill list?
It was the advice of our attorney, and that's what I'm asking for us to amend. So, is there any other questions?
Yes. Mr. Gagliardi, was that your advice to remove that item from the bill list even though it's paid?
Okay, first of all, it was the direction of the superintendent that you removed it from the bill list, and it's still on the bill list. Secondly, as I've said to the superintendent and to you privately and already publicly, I've been asked to provide legal advice before the board considers that, and that's what I'm suggesting, particularly since it's been paid already. I'm not sure why we're still discussing it, but I can't advise the board without some additional information, which you know about, because I asked you about it. So, I think that the request from the Board President is appropriate and consistent with the direction you've already gotten from the superintendent of schools.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Ms. Bora?
I, I am, I don't know if I'm doing this right, so Mr. Gagliardi, Mrs. President, Madam President, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I wanted to move, make a motion to move item H out of this voting for a separate discussion and voting tonight, which is the Buildings and Ground Committee's recommendation to, you know, approve the pre-referendum services. I feel like that needs another discussion with all the board members before we go into this vote. So, if, not to hold anything else back, if I can make a motion to just separate that as a separate item for discussion after this, the rest of the vote is done. Can I make that motion?
Madam, am I hearing that you wish to just have a separate roll call vote and discussion?
For item H, separate vote for item H.
I'd like to second.
And allow for some discussion on it.
I don't think we have to move that out of the business administrator's report. If you want to have a discussion, we can have a discussion prior to voting, and then you can vote.
But can, but isn't allowed?
And then you can vote yes or no on the, on the item.
We're in discussion right now.
I can handle the procedural issue if you'd like, Madam President. So, in terms of the request that you're making, you can do it one of two ways. So, there's a, what you typically call a friendly amendment, which is you ask the mover and the secondor of the motion that's on the floor to withdraw the motion as it relates to item H. So, you'd vote on everything other than item H, have a separate discussion and separate vote. If they're not inclined to do that, you can make a motion to amend the motion that's on the floor to remove item H and have a separate discussion and a separate vote, which is what it sounds like you'd like to accomplish one way or the other.
Yeah, I just would like us to discuss this, you know, at land to everybody's satisfaction before we vote on that agenda.
We could do that during, we could do it under this report, absolutely. That's why I say, is there any questions or comments?
Don't want to add any more complications, yeah. That's, that's...
I think the easiest would be to keep it where it is on the agenda, have our discussion, and then go to vote, and then you have the ability to vote however you want on that item, absolutely.
But now, there's a motion and a second, so we got to undo something, right?
Right, that's correct. So, is the, is the motion...
Would you want to rescind the motion?
Right, to be rescinded, the motion you just made.
So, I should rescind the motion that I just made?
Yeah, if you rescind the motion, the chair has said, we'll have a discussion on item H, and then you'll vote on this agenda as it's presented.
I rescind.
All right, thank you. Good, Katie?
No, I, I saw you. I just want to make sure he was right, that's all, and I just... So, listen, we got to laugh a little bit, right? It's almost 11:00. So, so are we going to have discussion now?
Yes. Any comments or questions on the agenda?
Dissection of the BA report.
Yes.
I, do I still have the floor?
Ms. Belko?
Do I still have the floor? I just want to make sure I don't want to, okay. So, I, I think that we should go with the BA, with the business, not the business, the, well, yeah, the business administrator's report with that this is in. That was a recommendation from the Building and Grounds Committee. I think this has been discussed at length. I think that, you know, I've watched the committee meetings over the last few months. I've seen all the paperwork. I personally feel that we need to move forward. We don't have time to wait another month. We don't have time to do anything. We need to move forward and we need to have some action. The community wants us to do what we need to do. I think we have done our due diligence here as a board and as the Building and Grounds Committee and, you know, and going through finance. I think that this is, you know, we are talking about item H because you're looking very confused, so I just want to make sure, okay. Is that, or you're tired?
I was just, nope, I was just thinking, I was wondering if you were still commenting on how to do that and removing it.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just, I'm just saying that item H, I feel we, you know, we should move forward with it. I don't see any objection to why we shouldn't. I think the Building and Grounds Committee did a great job discussing it, and I think we need to move forward, and that's my opinion on it.
Mrs. Ratner?
I just wanted to ask an item not related to H first, if that's okay, or should I ask that after, so we keep it consistent with everything?
Let's leave it till after.
Okay. So, I had a couple of questions regarding the referendum, and I know Mr. Chiarella had suggested asking them at the meeting so that public, the public could hear the answers to them. Would there be a specific person to direct them to, Mr. Tate, Mr. Scheller, you, or I guess you as the chair, would that be ideal?
Sure, and then whoever can...
Okay. So, you know, I guess my first question is, especially after looking at the demographers' report, I'm slightly concerned about only accommodating in terms of expansion, an additional 150 students at the high school right now. And I know that the administration has said that there will be stopgaps put in place to help with that, but at the same time, it's also showing that the population at the high school is going to continue to grow larger. And I'm not sure if it has been, I guess, decided what these stopgaps would be and how many students this would accommodate for sure, but I don't want to be put in a position where, you know, similarly to what happened when this school was open, we're already dealing with overcrowding. So, I guess my concern is, you know, even looking at the numbers, it says, I think we're adding 800, you know, to accommodate 800 additional students at the middle school right now, and only 150 at the high school, but it looks like the numbers are higher at the high school. Why are we not addressing the high school a little bit further?
So, when we looked at the whole plan, part of the concern is that when you look at the high school and you look at the middle school accommodating the unhoused students, we know everybody has a seat, but according to the state, the state of New Jersey, the unhoused students, the problem also that the middle school has that the high school doesn't have, is in the common areas. The high school has two lunchrooms. It has more than one gym. It has large hallways. It has a common area. The middle school does not have those opportunities. We have half of our seventh grade, pardon me, a third, I want to say it correctly, a third of our seventh grade entrailers outside. So, that was one of the reasons why they looked at that. I wanted to say, though, and I don't know if Dr. Higgins is still here, because we've spoken at length and he was willing to speak, but he may have, since it's such a late meeting, he may have finally left, and I respect him for doing so. We did have very strong conversations, and I actually had this conversation with Mr. Tate and Dr. Lehman as well. Currently, the way the plan sits, it has six classrooms. The reason why we didn't look at the expansion in more than six classrooms, and I did ask this question, is because in order to not touch the footprint of what will eventually be the tower, which is what it's been referred to, the tower would house approximately 1,000 children, it would have its own cafeteria, its own gym, I look at it as its own center, if that's the way the building principal wants it to go. You cannot expand the six beyond six. I started thinking out of the box and saying, can we stick a hallway in? Can we make a 12? Can we extend it? Six was the maximum number at a very, a very appropriate and a very small, I don't want to say small because it was $5 million at the most, but a small cost in comparison to the tower being a lot of money. So, then we started thinking a little bit out of the box. We are, we did have this conversation. There is a two-room area within the high school that was originally looked at if they were going to do the whole referendum at the high school that could possibly be expanded. We don't know if it's possible to be possibly as a stopgap or put into the referendum. That could be four classrooms instead of two, three, maybe four. So, that could bring you to 10 classrooms. The other reason is that, and I did have this conversation with Dr. Higgins because I wanted to make sure I was providing accurate information if I was asked this question. Also, when you look at the numbers of unhoused students, there is an anomaly that we have to bring forth to, for transparency that people don't realize. 300 to 400 students that are seniors leave for senior options, so they're not physically in the building. Additionally, we are working very diligently, and I want to compliment Mr. Maraldo, in combination with Dr. Lehman as well as the other supervisors, to start looking at even more of the dual enrollment classes. Dual enrollment is something that I am very passionate about. I spent my first 10 years of my career in Florida, and it was a very big push in the schools there as far as the community colleges. That is something that we're starting to partner, we just partnered with Delaware, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, we just partnered with Delaware, and we're looking to do that. What does that mean? It means that we also offer higher-level classes for children, and they are not occurring in our building. So, when I started to look at all these anomalies, I said specifically to Dr. Higgins, are we accommodating your needs? Because we're looking, this is a five-year project. You know, God willing, if everything passes, it could still be two and a half years, you know, 18 months, you know, after referendum and so forth, everything goes through. And he said he feels very confident with stopgap projects that he's starting to look at, and I'm going to be doing it with him, because we were able to really, really expand the middle school with those stopgap projects, looking at the current six classrooms, as well as also looking at with the, with DRG services to say, are there smaller-scale projects that does not in any way affect future building of that tower? So, I don't know if I answered all your questions.
You know, definitely, that helps a lot. I guess, you know, my next question, you know, and I'm sorry for asking again so many questions. Concerns about renovating Apple Garth. I'm aware that it can be done. I guess, you know, my concern is you can have a really old car that still functions really well, or you can have a, you know, a relatively new car that you have to basically, you know, send to the pound, you know. I'm concerned that Apple Garth is sort of both. It's an old building that has a lot of problems. Is there a contingency plan in place if they start construction on it and there are significantly more problems than we thought? I know it's inspected for safety, you know, and maintenance, obviously. We wouldn't be doing right by students or staff if we didn't, but has it been inspected by like a, a construction inspector? And if there are major issues with it, are we able to go back to change something if needed?
So, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Tate to jump in if I say anything that he feels he could expand upon better than myself. It is my understanding, both through SSP, who was paid to look at it in its entirety, and DRG Group, who was not paid to come forth with an idea to move forward with this, and I wanted someone in the public to make that statement, so I did want to make sure I had an opportunity to correct that, their statement exactly in my office to both myself, Mr. Tate, and Dr. Lehman was, they had their engineers go into the roof, the ceiling, the areas within the rafters and so forth, and do, and look at it, the building in its entirety, and they were impressed, and they said that it had quality bones, that the foundation, and please stop me, Mr. Tate, if there's anything I miss say, that the building to make the renovations that are necessary and have not been done in 20 years, nothing's been done except for, except for the surface and making it look pretty, I mean, and some corrections, and that was pre-me. It is my understanding that both these companies felt that renovating the building, refurbishing, renewing, and adding on would be appropriate, safe, financially appropriate and fiscally appropriate, and that was, that was what we got from both companies that utilize engineers and architects and so forth. Mr. Tate, is there anything I said that was incorrect? Thank you, sir.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I taught in a building that was 1920s, so the age isn't what concerns me, it's more all of the repairs that we've heard over the years.
And it's really, it's really, I think the word is replacement is more appropriate than repair. So, replacement of, replacement of large, you know, whether it be an HVAC or replacement of a roof and so forth, is what we're, is what we're looking at.
Okay. I know Ms. Bora had brought it up at the BGNT meeting, you know, and I know we have members of the community who came here to discuss their concerns. Listen, I think we all want to get the referendum out there. I totally get it. I, as, you know, someone with three young kids, is going to be affected by it significantly. So, I'm not saying like I want to put this off years and years. My daughter's entering the middle school next year. You know, so I, this is not what I'm trying to like suggest. I guess my, you know, my thing is, I tried to find where on the Department of Education it states if we, let's say, waited an additional month, we would have to put off the referendum an additional six months, because I only found the 2021, you know, timeline, but it pretty much seems consistent, like if you put through the paperwork in July, then you can go out for January, and if it's August, then it's February. So, I guess I'm wondering why it's so much more expanded.
We asked this question specifically, I personally asked this question of both SSP as well as DRG, and they said the pre-referendum services, which is, I'm going to use the expression soup to nuts to get us to referendum, requires timing, planning, submission to the state, requirements. Mr. Tate took me in his office and showed me, it is not at all by what's provided at the BGNT meeting. It's expansive and extensive. I was told specifically that if we don't move forward now, and that's the board's decision, and we will not, the next referendum by date as per the state, and I don't know what they, because I've seen it, it goes March, it goes April, and there is no May, there is no June, there is no July, there is no August, it's September. So, respectfully, whatever the board decides, it's the board's, it's in the board's hands, it's your decision. If we do not move forward to, with, with the pre-referendum services, which means the whole ball of wax, and to get us to the referendum, if we do not do that at this time expediently, then we would be looking at a September of 2023 referendum, and that would be regardless of what company you go with, because two, two companies both said the same thing.
Okay. I have two more questions. Has it been looked at other elementary schools that could possibly house an expansion? I know that a couple of the elementary schools are under capacity right now. I think it's Woodlands, I could be wrong, that has, you know, almost 100 kids under, and, you know, also possibly looking into, you know, and, and I realize, you know, this is the plan that's here, but moving the sixth grade into the elementary schools, you know, I know that there's educational pros and cons to having sixth grade in middle school, to having sixth grade in elementary school. But I feel that it would help to reduce the needs at the middle school, which could then potentially open up additional financial resources to address more of the high school.
The answer to that would be the cost would probably, let me say this, because I'll be quoted, I want to make sure I say it correctly. Sixth grade, from an academic viewpoint, and I'm going to speak, this is my personal opinion and just myself as a middle school educator, pedagogically, the sixth grade belongs in the middle school. Okay. That, that, separate from that, just so you know, because we looked at this, it is a domino effect. If you turn around and say, we're just going to go ahead and leave Apple Garth as is, Apple Garth must be expanded first primarily because Oak Tree is overwhelmed in size. So, we need to expand Apple Garth once we renovate it to move this third grade out of Oak Tree to move to Apple Garth. I believe that there was a resolution made to keep the sixth grade in the middle school, but anything could be changed. So, let's say we decided to move the sixth grade out, that means that you put undue large amounts of numbers back on the other elementary schools. So, instead of having to renovate one elementary school and one middle school for expansion purposes, you would now have to be looking at all of the elementary schools. So, that was why that plan was not moved forward with.
Okay, and then...
Oh, and that, right, certification was also an issue, and that, that was, I don't want to go backwards, because everybody's welcome to watch, but that was a previous meeting, because the certification has changed in the last, we've been in this building, we just started 11 years in the middle school, and a lot of teachers that moved over actually had to go and take additional tests, additional requirements, because the certification is different, because it has now changed. It used to be a K through eight cert, and now the cert's a K through five.
Hmm, okay. And then, you know, I guess my last question, and this is something that I don't really know if we would have the power to do, would just be, you know, having gone to the township know if we would have the power to do, would just be, you know, having gone to the township and then basically giving us their word, that, you know, these are the numbers, this is what we need to go on. Is there, I don't know whether it's a, a letter that can be written, or a discussion that could be held, that they, you know, agree to put a moratorium on building for the five years. I, I, as I said, I know this is like an out-of-the-box thing, but like if they're going to tell us, you know, today, these are our numbers, we're not building anything, we vote on this, you know, we put it up there, and then tomorrow they're like, oh, well, you know what, we're actually going to build a thousand houses, we're in trouble. So I don't know if there's a relationship that can be developed in that situation to help alleviate that.
I've brought it up a million times, and I'm sorry, but I've brought it up to the township a million times, and I'd just like to speak to that for a second, because, you know, tonight it's been brought up about what happened at BG and T, and, and I'm the one who said, I brought it up as being political, possibly political, right? And I'm going to tell you why, I'm going to give, I could give you twenty examples, but I'm going to give you one.
But get closer to the mic.
They, go, let's go back to the land over here where we're going to build a school. Give me the...
Of course.
No, no, Coltron, at Coltron. So they're gonna, we're gonna, they're giving us the land, and we're going to build a school on it. This was the best thing, this, they sold this to us as the best thing since sliced bread. They sold it to the community as the best thing from sliced bread. The mayor and the Board of Ed, the mayor's coming to our rescue, is going to give us land, it's going to be great. Let me tell you a little something about cluster housing and the law. When you have cluster housing, when you, when, when the zoning board or the, the planning board says, yeah, we'll allow you to use cluster zoning to build these houses, that means that they could use smaller plots of land that are, that, you know, and, and kind of override our, the, the current zoning, build more housing in that, in that area, and then they, then you get the residual land from that, and that land, they said we could use to build schools, or a school, and, and some other things. Well, this is what really happened then. The, the, the cluster, the cluster zoning law says, this is statewide, you can't do that. It's open space, you can't do it. If it's designated open space, it's open space, no schools, no anything. All of a sudden, when that comes, a, a group of residents come here and they threaten the suit, the developer threatens us through the town, all of a sudden there are rare mating turtles over there, and the wetlands are approaching, and, and now the land's no good anymore, we don't want to do that. We want to go look at coffee land now, we want to look at other things. That's what scares me with that kind of stuff, because those are the kind of things that happen behind the scenes, I, I, you know, I know the truth, and, and I know what they're, what they're really doing, but that's not what they saw at us. So when, when they, when they're saying, hey, no, permits haven't been pulled for the land that these developers already own, you, you don't have to worry about it in that five-year horizon, which is the only horizon we could use, you don't have to worry about it. But we're two years away from a mayor's race. And I don't, what I'm afraid of is, there's a lawsuit with one development, and then we have another development without permits pulled. Then all of a sudden, after the mayor's race, hey, the, the, the lawsuit's over, and they pulled the permit, so we're going to move forward. That's what scares me. I, what I wanted, and I agree with you, I, what I wanted was for us to go back and say, give us this in writing, or give us, tell, give, give us something concrete, so that we're not going to be sitting here in five years from now when we, when we open a school, and, and they say, hey, I don't know why they didn't, they didn't, we were open and transparent, we met with them, we told them, you know, and in reality, we were sold a bill of goods. That was my fear, just because of past history. This has nothing to do with the current mayor and those, but I don't know, because I've been here my whole life, and I've seen it over and over and over again. And I just want to, just another thing that you said, the high school. This high school was at capacity when we opened, but it wasn't at capacity because of poor planning. It was at capacity when we opened, because it took so long for us to build. So it was planned for a five-year horizon, there was, there were delays, there were lawsuits because we had to have it in the park, so it was the Sierra, you know, the Sierra Club, local residents and things like that. That pushed us, that, that caused the delay, we had to go out for another referendum to fix it, because it took so long. And, and, and that's why we then opened up at capacity.
Right, and I really appreciate you explaining it, because, you know, this is not my expertise, I've got my school counseling masters, education masters, not building stuff. You know, I guess just in that case then, because we've seen that happen, and then, you know, we've seen it may have taken longer, I realize we're mandated to look at five years. Is it illegal for us to consider past that, or is it just a suggestion?
I, I think we could think about it, but the problem is the, and we have our, our legal scholar here, and we have Mr. Teague. But I think that once we get past, we could say, hey, this is what I really think is going to happen, or, but they're not going to have, give us two hundred and fourteen kids, maybe they'll give us five hundred and sixteen. And that's, and I, and I do agree with Ms. Ryback when she says it, because she's right. The, the, but, I forgot what I was talking about. Senior moment.
Extra time.
Can you plan ten years?
Plan further.
So we can't, we could, we, we could think that that might be the case, but we can't put it into action. We can't say, because we think this, we're going to, we're going to put on ten extra classrooms, because the state then will say, no, you can't do that. You don't have, you don't have those students in there.
Oh, Ms. Kirby, yes.
But the, the long-range facilities plan requires us to update based on the demography, demographers report, and then we can only referendum and make plans that are within the scope of that long-range facilities plan, so you kind of start getting boxed in.
Right.
Ms. Arminio?
So on H, part of my trepidation on this, as is discussed with, as everybody else discussed it, is one, we haven't really gotten the township to give us the affordable housing, the actual affordable housing numbers. Even though Mr. Weinberg sent something, there, the, the numbers that I used at the Buildings and Grounds Committee, you know, we're supposed to, they're supposed to be building sixty-four, uh, forty-seven hundred, I don't want to misquote, but I, I really think that it is not going to be a ten-year plan. I think it's coming sooner, and we have revisions to the master plan. The township is making revisions to the master plan, which is the development of Monroe, and that's coming soon, and we don't know what that's going to look like. So we're making plans on, on our end without really knowing what the township is doing. Terms of a moratorium on building, we are obligated under the affordable housing settlement to put a lot, so we, so when they say we have eight hundred and fifty affordable housing obligation, what that means is you have to multiply that by eighty percent, because that is only twenty percent of the build-out. We, we owe twenty percent of affordable housing, but the build-out is much more than that. In order to get to a hundred percent, they have to do eighty, eighty percent of market rate value. That's the expansion we're going in this community. And again, that's a master plan revision, so we're going, putting the cart before the horse in, in a sense, and the master plan committee is going to be coming out in a month or two. I don't want to delay anything, we are up against the wall, we've been up against the wall for ten years, but these are the issues that are real. And, and the other thing is, I asked for a specific formula for the calculation, and I got an eighty-five, eighty-four-page document that is full of technicalities. We, we talk about transparency, we talk about asking a question and getting one answer. I did not get the answer. I have an eighty-four-page document that I have to, that I'm sure I don't understand to answer my question. So that's how my question is being answered, I got thrown this document? That's not right. We've been discussing this for years, how we ask for information and we don't get it properly. So I have a problem with that. And then the final site plan, that means the property is really all, all approved, and Ms. Gagliardi, you may correct, that plan is approved. A final site plan is only tweaking a few things, like how many trees you're going to put in, or if you're going to put in sidewalks or not. Those, those approvals are already there, and I can assure you, because I was the only civilian in the courtroom when they were talking about affordable housing and our obligation, and they said they were very eager to get the, the shovels in the ground, and they were going to do it far before the timeframe. So we're, I believe, and I'm not the expert, and we have all kinds of documentation saying I'm wrong, I would be happy to be wrong, but I've been watching this town for twenty years. This building, we were also told we were getting free land. This building was, is on supposedly free land that Monroe never owned, that the state owned, and the delay and the cost increase was because we were given false information. It went from, from a hundred and ten million dollar referendum that didn't pass because they were told, don't worry, don't pass it, I'll get you free land, to an eighty-four million dollar, because it was supposed to be free land, and it ended up costing a hundred and thirty million. That's because of information that we rely on. That's my concern.
Yeah, so as far as the document you were given, I specifically, and, and we can go back again, because that is not, lack of transparency on my part, because I wouldn't read the eighty-four pages either, but I specifically said...
Oh, I'm going to read them, I don't know that I'll understand.
Mr. Teague, we, you know, when we discussed it, we asked, we did ask the demographer, one of the board members, and all the board, and all of the, we all agreed, would like the formula. That's his business. So what was given to you...
So that's the answer I got.
That, that was what was given to us to give to you. We can go back and ask if there's a...
Doesn't matter now.
A short formula. As far as the other, I'm going to repeat this again, and I totally respect whatever decision is made, I don't know what the, what other numbers to go with. These were the numbers that were given to us, we were very clear, they said it included the affordable housing. We, I asked that question personally, I repeated the question, and then in writing, he provided the same thing. If it's inaccurate, I am not disagreeing with you at all that you are right, I am sure you may very well be right, but I could only go with the information that was given to us, I don't know what other information to go with.
Okay, we, we can vote on it.
Anybody else? Mrs. Fabiana?
So just in listening here tonight and in listening to the BG and T meeting, I one hundred percent agree that we need a referendum, and we needed it yesterday, we needed it however many years ago, but I feel like there are concerns, like we, there are members of the board that have concerns about this going forward, we're concerned about the numbers, we're concerned, we're, we're just have concerns in general. And if we, as a board, have concerns, and we want to vote for this, we haven't even heard from our community yet. We haven't heard from anybody yet. So I don't, I, I don't think that's fair, I don't think it's fair, I understand that this would cause a delay, I, I understand that, and I, I don't want to cause a delay, but I also don't think it's fair for us to push something down on the community, say, well, we're, we're on a timeline, we have to get this done, and we don't give them an opportunity to, to speak about it. Like, we are up here expressing our concerns, because we can right now, but I can only imagine there are people listening at home that are like, well, I have questions and concerns too, and I want an opportu, I would like an opportunity to, to talk about it. So that's an air, like, I'm concerned about that. I don't think it's fair to push this out without getting feedback from the community.
Well, if I can just give my opinion about that, we have been talking about this for many, many years. These plans did not just come last week at BG and T, and we're pushing them out tonight. There has been lengthy discussion at several BG and T meetings, we saw a presentation from S S P, we had a presentation from D I Group, so the public has had the opportunity to see these, to view BG and T meetings, to give their opinion. If we don't approve it, that is fine, we do have an obligation though to, to house these students and to move forward with something. I don't know, we're not going to get numbers to change from the, from the, from the township, so I, I don't know what, delaying because we don't trust the town, where we're going to move forward there.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying we don't trust the town, and I under, again, I know that we've been talking about this for years and years and years, but we haven't talked about this plan on its own to the community. Like, yes, they've seen the BG and T meetings, they've seen it talked about here during our, our meetings and the presentations, but I feel like we should, we, we owe it to the community, the people that are going to vote, either vote for this or against it. We owe them the opportunity to have a meeting dedicated to the referendum and laying out the plan for them in its entirety, and what it's going to look like, and, you know, what is, what's going to happen to Apple Garth, and are we going to put trailers on the property, and what's that going to cost, and really just explaining everything to them, and then giving them the opportunity to speak about it, just solely on the referendum, not including it into our general board meeting. That's just my, that's my opinion.
I would like Kate to go first. I was going to say, you know, the other thing to, to consider is that, while we, you know, our, our ten people up here that can vote on it, in the end, we're not the ones who would be approving the referendum, and we don't want to spend all of our effort and time and money, because if I recall, it was very expensive to try to pass these referendums for something that we then find out that the public doesn't like, or has a lot of concerns about, and wanted, you know, maybe not a brand-new plan, but modifications to what is currently there. You know, I just don't want to, you know, spend that time and waste all of that money and effort to something that, you know, eventually doesn't get passed anyhow.
Mrs. Kirby, ma'am. And I hope everybody can bear with me, because I have a little spiel to share. I've been more on that side of the discussion than I've been on this side of the referendum, and Mrs. Kirby, you have been with me on that side, and it's, it's been a long journey getting here today, and I feel like what I've seen accomplished as a board member in two months is incredible. In terms of a plan that was, that is addressing more than one or two needs, in terms of the speed with which things were done, and I give you credit, Mrs. Chanley, for a lot of time and effort that you've put in with Mr. Teague and the rest of the administration, and, and I'm truly, truly very, I was very happy with the plan, and I, and I would like to also point this out, that we have put this plan out and approved it in the January meeting, before that, the public had seen the plan in the B G D meeting, had a whole month between that meeting and this meeting. So we've already done a little bit more, in my experience, and I may be wrong, than previous boards, in, in sharing a plan that's going to be finally put in the referendum, and giving them that much time to look at it. But I am still in favor of, and I have said this in B G D meetings as well, that I would like town halls, I would like to do things differently than the previous board, and this is my opinion as one board member. I would not have hesitated today. If we were not presented with a demographer's report two hours before the last B G T, which was completely surprising, it's, and it, and I literally saw that at the B G T, and I probably did not process it as well in that meeting, and since that day, since that meeting, I would like to share my personal experience with the members of the public, I feel like every single member here right now has spent hours, and I give credit to our president, who has talked to a lot of us, to Mr. Chiralla as a B G D, you know, committee chairperson, who's put in a lot of time and hours, Mrs. Chanley, who's listened to us and tried to reason with us as to what is the right way forward. Between the B G D meeting and today, it's a very short span of time, we all have full-time jobs, we've all done a due deliberation, trying to convince ourselves because that demographer's report was so unexpected. And that's the point that I'm getting at, is that if I had, if I would go back in the past and think that this would ever happen, that I would be not so sure of passing the resolution tonight, I wouldn't have believed myself if somebody had told me in the past. But today, I am not convinced, because I feel my back is up against the wall, based on this demographer's report, which I, I also want to comment on this, that I don't think, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm naive if I, you know, if you want to call that, but I don't want, I don't think anybody in this town wants us to fail, when it comes to students and building the right amount of schools. So, yes, there is corruption out there, and yes, there is uncertainties out there, and yes, this demographer's report does not look realistic, but we are tied, our hands are tied as to what we can do with it. And I feel if we put the onus of this, because this is for the public, this is for the students in town, I think our, you know, administration and the board president have done their part in the last short five days of talking to the town and its administration, and have been told this is it, I feel like we can, if we can put the onus of this on the public, to go to council meetings in hordes and ask them if they can put a moratorium, so that what we planned today can be sufficient, and, or they can tell us that, all right, plan, whatever it is, that we share the responsibility of this. And I'm just speculating here if that's a possibility, but what, what that really needs is time. And that is where I am torn today, that I do not want this to become a September twenty twenty-three referendum, I would really want this to be an April twenty twenty-three referendum, but at this point of time, that risk of six months of delay is going to get us a few things. One, something that I've always complained about from that side, public input. And there are fingers being pointed at us today that we are not allowing the public to comment, I feel like we take a month to do one or two town halls, if Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman would, you know, help us do that, send out a district survey, and these are all my suggestions. And in, and in that time, if we could ask Mr. Aldrizzio, if this demographer's report is not changing, if we could ask the D I E group to look at the middle school enrollment and change that scope slightly and increase the scope of the high school, it is evident, if we have to build according to this report, we should do, and I, and, and Mrs. Chanley, I'm very appreciative of all your out-of-the-box ideas, they're brilliant, and I know that, you know, things will probably get addressed with the high school pretty soon, using our capital projects, which is a more fiscally responsible way of doing it, if there is space and if we can create classrooms here. But I still think that if we took that month to discuss those plans, see another proposal for the referendum plan, give the public a chance to give our input, and in the March meeting, we vote, and I know what that means, is a September twenty twenty-three referendum, and I am probably going to be able to sleep better with that, knowing that that has a better chance of passing, because we took the input. We fought it before, that we were not asked for opinion and feedback, and I think today I am sitting on the opposite side, and I just can't, I, I can't make my peace with it. So I, it's been a very difficult decision for me to make this comment here, and I'm very appreciative of all the overtime hours the administration and a lot of board members have put into this, but I, I honestly think that our students are... But I honestly think that our students are unhoused. That needs to be addressed. But whatever we do today or in March is not going to really have an immediate impact on those unhoused students because whatever is going to be delivered is going to be delivered according to this demographic's report at a point where there will not be as many unhoused children. If that is wrong, I think in this one month, one more thing that we can do is urge the public to go to the town and ask the question about the demographic's report. Because honestly, I think as a board, we've done our, we've done our due diligence. I don't think we have any other choice but to take this demographic's report and run with it. But those were my thoughts. So my last conclusive, and Mr. Chirrelli, you've heard me say this, and Mrs. Kirby, you too, that if we, if there is any way we can approve something tonight and still make all of this happen, and I know whatever we approve has to be based on the plan that was approved. So if that can be decoupled, if there is some work that can happen in this next month that doesn't change with the impact on the project, I don't know if that's even a possibility, but I would like to ask that as a layman. If that is possible, then we should decouple that. We should add maybe a clause to that item, agenda item, saying that there will be changes to the referendum plan, as long as we can define a limit to which the dollar amount will change.
I think, if I may.
Yeah.
So the conversation that I had with Mr. Teig was that Item H is to approve the pre-referendum services that would get us to referendum. But the specifics, as we talked about, there could be an amendment. So, for example, I know of the concentration of concern is the difference between the middle school and the high school. If, if, and Mr. Teig, please correct me if I'm wrong. If we had the town halls and we did them expediently, let's say, the way we've been doing everything, within the next week, and someone said, you know what, similar to perhaps what Ms. Ratner said, you know, we want to take the sixth grade out and we want to move it back in, the answer is absolutely no.
No.
If the answer is, you know, looking at, I mean, the tower is a whole nother conglomerate of 1,000 students. But if we were to look at the, and it wouldn't be, it's better to engage D I G to do it because they're the professionals. We can have ideas, but we don't know what works, that, you know, are there other opportunities looking at the high school without touching that tower? Do I think that's doable in the next couple of weeks? I would say yes, Mr. Teig. Would you agree? Without going too far? We can't go too far out of the thought process because then it revamps and rechanges everything. The only other thing I want to say to the board, and of course, it is your decision, is it's my understanding that the long-range facilities plan is expiring. So we are bound by law to say we have X amount of housed unhoused students, 600, don't quote me, 650 or 700 here, 700 or 800 there, which is fine, and this could be put off. I mean, if that's the decision of the board, take more time and it becomes a September 2023 referendum. But I do believe that then we have to have a conversation, I'd have Mr. Teig bring to the next board meeting, about doing a long-range facilities plan separate if this was, if this was not approved as far as their services. Because right now, this includes that service. But we are required to say to the state, we have a plan. What that plan looks like and how long that plan is going to take, as he schooled me, is a different story. But you must by law have a plan. So our plan is expiring. So, but I do agree that this is giving you, it doesn't say, it says, "single-story addition or renovations, minor attachment or single-story addition." It's not saying to the extent, if you look at H, if we were to be able to meet with them, like you said, you know, you want the input of the town, which I agree with and I'm very comfortable doing, I think with Dr. Lehman, we do it together, whoever. But it would have to be like, immediately. It couldn't be, and it's okay if we decided, if we decided, you know what? We're going to take the next six months and we're going to move it to September 2023. That's a poor decision. That's a decision. But if you want to keep the timeframe that we have and possibly in use, the word tweak when we spoke, and possibly have to make some renovations, it would have to be timely, expediently, and it would not have to be out of the realm of what we're looking at. So some of the ideas of the sixth grade, this or that, elementary schools, no. The answer, I mean, I'm going to speak to Mr. Teig, but the answer would be no. He's shaking. He said yes. Okay.
And I want to make it publicly obvious that I think this is a great plan. I'm just asking for a slight different, you know, change of scopes between middle school and high school, given that we have other areas that can be expanded in the high school. And middle school plan was proposed as Phase 1, Phase 2, if we ever need to go that route. So I am looking at, let's do Phase 1 in middle school or maybe Phase 1 and part of Phase 2 and then bringing out that budget into the high school and addressing one more expandable area, not just the sixth.
And the problem is, it's not a problem. The concern is, well, the issue at hand is, and I can't speak on this while I'm speaking to the architects, where is that area? Because I know that every time we have this conversation about the tower, it's self-sustaining. It's an area of 1,000 children, self-sustaining, where you have the cafeteria. So you can't do part of it.
Right. No, so that is six classrooms in that tower area. But there's an area in the front of the high school, on the side of the high school, and by.
Yeah, the tower was the 1,000 children.
I'm not talking about the tower area, right?
So you're talking about the area where we had the weight room and the additional classes.
And then there is one, I think the original DI Group plan showed four areas where we can expand the high school.
And then, of course, it is, you know, totally the respected, where you want to go with the monetary means. So this was the most inexpensive of keeping it to that 95 to 105 million. If we start doing that, even if you take the expansion away, you show it on the plan because you have to show up for the middle school because we already have unhoused. So it's, they're not going to really have extra space. We're just going to be taking care of the children that are currently there. Here we'll take 75 kids or 100 kids. So I think what we have to do is long as we showed it, but I think then it becomes into cost, which I can't speak on.
Great.
Which I can't speak on. Is there anything, Mr. Teig, that you would want to add?
To clarify some of the things that you stated, which Ms. Bora is asking. DI Group did previously propose four areas, four additions here. What is in the current proposal is just the one area that was selected, which is the rear of the building, which is six classrooms. The other components were a two-classroom, two large music classrooms on the side of the building here. And then the other was to build a Butler Building weight room at the rear left corner and then turn the existing weight and cardio room into, I think, four classrooms and a small group instruction area. The part that you mentioned about the front is actually in here. So it was to divide the library into instructional classrooms. So if you decide to go ahead tonight and authorize DI to proceed and want to look at some of those four options to adding in, you could consider doing an addendum. So in other words, DI could start with the work. Within a month, next meeting, you say, we'd like to add these components that have already been designed. Yes. To Ms. Chanley's point, yes. If you want to scrap everything and start looking at other areas and everything, no, you could not make the April.
Can I ask you a follow-up question? So that's great to know that we can do that because I think that really lifts the weight off my shoulder. When we do that, though, I do not want to cross the 100 million. I do not want to go into a six-digit referendum. Personally, I feel that is going to hold us back. At that same time, and I remember you had made this comment, that based on what the demographic's reports say, when you do the pre-referendum planning, if the middle school plan was originally for 17 classrooms, you may go down to 12 based on however that fits. We would get that delta in the plan, in the capital amount of the project, right?
So you'll turn that demographic report over to the architect. He will work the LRFP. The other component of the LRFP, if I didn't explain to folks, is the long-range facilities plan is an exhaustive inventory of all the spaces within the district. So they go in and literally measure each room, all the components of the room. But as far as determining unhoused students, it identifies the size of the classroom and then based on standards, how many students can be in there. The thing you have to be careful about when you say a classroom can hold so many students, in this district in particular, you have classrooms built in the 1930s, 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, et cetera. So they're different sizes. So you can't say a classroom holds 24 or 25. So the long-range facilities plan, they go through and based on those standards, cataloging every space in the building, instructional and non-instructional, will come back and say, the educational capacity per the facilities efficiency standards for this building is 500 students. You currently have 600 students. You therefore, 100 students are considered unhoused. And your five-year projection is that you will have 200 unhoused. To correct a point that was mentioned earlier, you are not limited to just doing the unhoused students in that five-year projection. The board can decide to put out a referendum for anything that they desire. It is up to the public vote. As far as the financing that the Department of Education offers, either through debt service aid or through grants, that is based on unhoused students. So if you were to say, the five-year projection tells us we are going to have 500 unhoused students. We think it's going to be more. We're going to build to 700. The state is going to say, well, we're just looking at the 500. We are only going to contribute towards those 500. The additional 200 are on you, Monroe, and the taxpayers.
Mr. Teig, may I ask you a quick question? When you had mentioned that there are certain classes that will hold 80 or 30 or you can't necessarily do it like that, does it also take into account, you know, special education classrooms? Because I know that there are a lot of classes where the class size is much smaller because of, you know, individual needs of those students. But then because of that, it also creates the need for additional spaces elsewhere because we want to give, you know, every student what they need. So I was curious how that plays into it.
It does take into account special ed classrooms. One of the things that was looked at here by DI Group previously is there are some gen ed classrooms, around the large classrooms here, that due to expansion of the special needs program have turned into special ed classrooms where you might only have six students. If that was used as a gen ed classroom, you'd have 25 students in there and obviously less unhoused students. So when they looked at the overall picture for the high school, they were looking at, okay, what can we do to make appropriately-sized special ed classrooms by repurposing existing spaces and free up full-size gen ed classrooms?
Okay. And then I guess this is my only other question for you, you know, being someone who's been in this for so many years. We have, I know we have a number of people in the district or in the town who have said, you know, if Applegarth is renovated, I won't vote for it. And I know that we have people who have said, I won't vote for it if it isn't renovated. You know, just like the masses, like a lot of things. Has there ever been any survey or like large focus group or anything like that done to see if we have a referendum that includes the repair or re, what was it? I forgot what I said. But, you know, the repair of Applegarth, if it's something that the community would support. You know, because, you know, my thing is if majority of the community says, well, absolutely, we want to keep that building, I feel a lot better about doing it. But if we have a majority of the community that says, well, no, I'm not going to support that, then I guess that's where that, that community input also would come into play for that.
That's really a discussion for the board.
Can I make a comment here?
Sure.
The renovation of Applegarth and addition to middle school increases our chances of getting state funding significantly because the state does not encourage brand-new buildings. They encourage renov, that's what I've read and heard from all the experts. So having a renovation of Applegarth done and adding to our current middle school increases the possibility that while we are looking at 100 million referendum, when this goes to Department of Education, we may get funding that we weren't seeing before for this. And that's definitely a chance I feel comfortable taking, not having to think about additional operational costs with another building for middle school.
And then I just, I don't remember if it was the answer. Were there other elementary schools that have the ability to be expanded on if it was needed?
Yes. And that was what one of the previous boards had looked at. There were studies done for expansion to Brookside and Barclay Brook School. The properties were vetted. DI Group came up with ideas for additions to those, but that was under a previous plan.
Because then we're also looking at a renovation then and not necessarily a new school. And I know, I know I'm much newer to all of this than, you know, many people have been so invested in it for so many years. I just, I don't want to, I want to do our due diligence and I don't want to put something out there that's going to fail. That's, you know, that's my primary concern. And obviously also, you know, give a good building that will provide, you know, quality education for students, you know.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Should we have a roll call vote, Mr. Gorski?
Oh, can I make a quick comment? So the wording does not need to change in order to do what Mr. Teig said or what Mrs. Chanley proposed. And I don't know if I should be bringing it up in other board business, the town hall, to kind of make, you know. If, I don't even know if that's part of this vote right now, but that was something, that would be something that would be needed if we would, trying to get the public input and is that something that we make?
But are we getting the public input if we're pushing this forward right now? That's my question. That's my concern.
We were trying to get both better, but my idea, my personal opinion on this was that this way we get best of both the worlds. We tweaked the current plan to, and to defend my reasoning for this is that we have considered a lot of different plans in the past six years. And there has been, you know, pros and cons with everything. This seems to be the one that addresses most of our needs at a decent dollar amount compared to other referendums. It has better chances of getting state funding. So I think the plan as a whole is definitely, is solid. And I think we need to be able to have the opportunity to tweak it to the way, you know, to the, to the point where we put a little bit more focus in one school and take it out from the other. And if that can be done in the next month while, you know, if it does, if we can do that without slowing down the, you know, without moving the timeline from April to September, then if we don't need to change the wording on that, then we can go ahead with the vote.
The addendum would then make reference to any changes because I think that you're not voting, and you correct me. I believe we're voting on their services for pre-referendum, but changes can be made. And if the changes that the, that the public said were wanted and everybody, and then the board voted on it, then what it would do is it would, it would not stop D I G from doing the pre-referendum services. It would then change the date. So, for example, and he's shaking his head. I looked at him because he, this is his knowledge base. So my thought is, let's say, the vote passes and we move forward, D I G Group. And we have town halls and we have surveys. And it comes to be that there is a change in the plans. So then we go forward with a referendum and it'll be September of 2023. And it will have then incorporated, it will then have incorporated the changes that we feel are appropriate. I agree with you. When we looked at this and we started thinking out of the box, me personally, I know the middle school needs renovations. What does that look like? Maybe it needs half and maybe, you know, that would be the other half and it would go to the high school. I'm very passionate that I believe sixth grade belongs in the middle school. That's from a pedagogical viewpoint. As far as the elementary schools, why would we look to renovate other elementary schools? If Applegarth needs the renovation, you might as well expand on there and then move Oaktree's third grade. But can changes happen? Yes. All it would mean is that we're utilizing this company. We've hired, we've hired this company, but then the changes would be made and then it would just be pushed off. It just wouldn't meet the deadline.
Madam, may we call the question? We've gone, I think we've had enough discussion.
Board action items A through I. Ms. Belko.
Yes to everything except Letter B, the bill to David Rubin.
Did we pull that?
Yes, we did. All right, never mind. She said yes to everything.
Ms. Fabiano.
Yes, yes to everything, no to Item H.
Mr. Chirrelli. Yes. Ms. Ratner.
Yes to everything, no to Item H.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Orotsky.
I'm going to vote yes to everything. I'm going to abstain on Letter H, please.
Ms. Bora.
Yes to everything.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes. Do I have to recuse on, no, we didn't do that yet. Yes.
Ms. Spearman.
Yes.
Ms. Kirby.
Yes.
Motion passes. Madam President, and members of the Monroe Attenture Board of Education's recommended that board action items J through N be approved by nine-member vote consent roll call. So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we can have a roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Ms. Bora.
Yes to everything. I recuse on Item N for myself.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes, recuse on N for myself.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes on everything, recuse on Letter N for myself.
Ms. Belko.
Yes, except for N, where my name is.
Ms. Fabiano.
Yes, recuse on Item N for myself.
Ms. Ratner.
Yes, everything, recuse on N for myself.
Mr. Chirrelli. Yes. Ms. Spearman.
Yes, recuse on N for myself.
Ms. Kirby.
Yes, and recuse on N for myself.
Motion passes. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is Board President's Report. I'm going to keep it very brief because I know it's very late. I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that Mrs. Chanley said about our relationship and with Jamesburg. You know, I think it's important that we continue to foster that relationship of inclusivity with our Jamesburg students here at the high school. And I said it last month and I'll say it again, this board and this school district does not in any way, shape, or form do anything to make the students here at the high school not feel like they are part of the Monroe Township High School. We are one-school community. The rhetoric that is being falsely portrayed in the public through social media. The rhetoric that is being falsely portrayed in the public through social media is incorrect, is false. And all it is doing is trying to divide our two communities and cause chaos. It is unacceptable for the lies that have been portrayed about our board, about our board attorney. And I really wish that the community would stop spreading this false rhetoric because that is what will actually hurt the students here at Monroe Township High School, all of the students, whether you're from Monroe or from Jamesburg. We are one school community and we are working together with Jamesburg on many initiatives that is good for all of the children. So with that, our next item on the agenda is other board business. Mrs. Bora.
I had two things to talk about. One, that I just mentioned, the town hall. I would like to request that our administration, I think we give, i- if we can, we give Mr. Elrisio a few weeks to come back with some sort of modifications, just so that you have a better idea of what are the possibilities. But go to town hall, you know, as, in the next month sometime, before the next meeting, so that you have a little pulse of the, of the public. I, I'm just putting it out here for you to, you know, do your planning on your own, whatever works the best, Mrs. Chanley. I can't ask you. I'm just suggesting a survey, if we could create one for the community. I know that when we do things like this, a lot of, a lot of, you know, things will come that we've already discussed and spent hours deliberating on. I don't think that that's what we're focusing on. We're focusing on something that we might have missed in our deliberation that might come back from public input. And if a lot of people are saying that, then I think on the seat that I am sitting on, I, I have to do my due diligence to the public.
May I just ask you one quick question? Did you say that you want us to go to Mr. Elrisio first or you prefer the town halls first?
I did mean that if you could go to him and get, get an understanding of what kind of modifications can happen without going over budget.
And then start, and then start the town hall immediately?
Then start the town hall. That way you are going with, you're going knowing everything that's possible as you're trying to. This town hall is, is more so to let the people know before we finalize the plan. Because we've been in situations where, you know, when we were told the plan, it was set in stone. Not even the slightest modification could be made. And that's what we're trying to do differently as a board this time. And the other thing that I know, Mrs. Kirby, you said that the board, there was no recommendation from the administration for a traffic study. I would like to speak on behalf of the public right now and say that there have been a lot of chatter about a traffic study. And I honestly believe the traffic pattern is not going to change because we're only building space for students that are already in the schools and the demographic report proves that. But that said, a traffic study cannot hurt us because it may bring out some modifications that the town can do to alleviate some of our present day problems. And, and it would just, it would just become a collaboration then with the town to say, you know, we did a traffic study and we found out maybe this, this left turn lane is needed here, something like that random. So I would like us to, on, you know, as a board, maybe think about approving a traffic study because even though the administration doesn't think it impacts this particular referendum plan, it's just good, good, and I'm, and I'm not sure what the cost is. So pardon my ignorance on that. If, if there is a significant cost, then we can vote on it. But I feel like if the cost is bearable, it's worth doing. Thank you.
And maybe it's a question for Mr. Teague. Would that be something that, as part of these pre-referendum services, is that something that they, that would come out and be requested of DI Group for us to move forward with that? Would they be, would that be something that they would handle for the district?
So the traffic study is not included in the proposal, proposal that you have before you. Based on the general plan that they gave us, it does not appear that there's going to be any modifications to the ingress or egress out of the middle school lot. And that is a county road. If you were to change that, then you'd have to do applications to the county engineer's office. I think you're also talking mainly about the high school site here. So no, there was discussion with the police department. I know there's an ongoing dialogue with the police where they're investigating different things. And there's been some discussion about a traffic study there. But no, a traffic study is not currently included in any proposal.
Okay. Ms. Arminio?
Just, Ms. Bora, I have been, you know, very supportive of your position except I, I really, I think we're going way beyond the scope of where we need to be. And I think that's just going to create more chaos and havoc even in the public. I was just hoping for one, at least one special meeting that was to present this fully again with the demographer, with the plans, and with the understanding that we have taken many, many years to do this. This is like, I, I am supportive of exposing this to the public and having one special meeting for it. But to start changing things around, I, I personally think, having been on this board, this is my ninth year, and been through all these referendums and been through ad hoc committees, I, and I, I believe that there's been some, I, I have some objection to how we got to this so quickly. I understand how we do it and I think that it necessitates us moving forward with this. But I do believe that the plan and everything should be exposed to the public. So I would only ask, I, I disagree with you asking the architect to come back and make changes. I'm not sure that we haven't vetted this well enough. I don't think it's a perfect plan. I would have prefer, I voted, and I know there were some votes that you didn't do, that I voted for all of the referendums since I've been here in this town. So I think we cannot keep going over and rehashing. There will always be people. Look, the people who voted down the referendum for the new building said, why don't we expand the buildings we have? Now we're going to do that. We're going to have people saying, why don't we build new buildings? So I think we just have to stop. We have to expose it to the public. This is what we came up with after, even though this is a new board, this is what we came up with after many years. And so I would only be in supporting of having one special meeting, exposing it to the public before the next board meeting. So doing all that other stuff that I, I would, would require a motion and I, I would not vote for that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Rotsky?
If I may, go, change the topic just a tad real quick. I'd, I'd like to go back to and address both what Mrs. Chanley said and what, what President Skirby said and say how happy I am to see the district administrations working together. I received a similar, high-energy, excited report from Dr. Valani that the meeting went great, very excited about some projects going forward and, and the better communication. We're very, very, as the representative of Jamesburg, I speak on my half, on my behalf as well as my board, my community and my, my students. So this is a great step in the right direction and we're really appreciative. The hope is that this is, is a better starting block and continues straightforward, whomever is the middle school principals. We keep those connections in line, so on and so forth. And I think, President Skirby, what you said, I really appreciate it. Seeing the students all as one united group, getting them together as best as possible is the way it should always be. And we're appreciative for, for that perspective. But I want to just say that this is a relationship that goes back 40-plus years, obviously. And I don't want to rehash all the past and I don't even want to go back decades. I'd rather just focus on the last few years, if I may. There's, the poor optics are a function of what's taking place on this board and what's taking place out in the communities. And yes, what's taking place on social media for sure over the last few years. There are several members on this current board that have been active for years and have had access to both the tuition agreement as well as the annual numbers. Personally, I presented these numbers with full transparency during my time as rep for a number of years, only to be told that Jamesburg must be hiding something or playing with the numbers. As we all know, numbers are audited on an annual basis and this year especially with a new auditor, everything came through clean without any problems. This trust, this distrust was made even more clear a few years back when I was presenting an actually, an extra $100,000 check as a good gesture. Once the Jamesburg budget was finalized, we realized we had some extra money in our budget. After the meeting, I was actually verbally accosted by a Monroe councilman for not paying the debt in full. That was offensive. That was something that was carried out, not just here in that meeting that day, but that was sort of, that was some clarity on the bigger picture of, of how this is viewed. So there are still members on this board, there have been, there are, that are active on social media. Back then, still now, stirring pots, feeding distrust. I find that unfortunate and I hope, in all honesty, that we can move forward, that we can make things better. But with all due respect, it doesn't just happen overnight. I appreciate you asking for it. It may feel uncomfortable for the board now that so many more people in Jamesburg are sort of reading into this and feeling what they're feeling and, and speaking up about it and maybe uncomfortable. But it's been uncomfortable for the Jamesburg board for years. And on that, I do look forward to moving forward. We all do. But we, Mrs. Chanley made a comment earlier about, we're the adults, right? So we, we, we have the ability to be adults, choose whether we're wearing masks or if we're doing the right thing. As adults, we also set the tone. So as board members, as administration, as community members, we set the tone that feeds out into the public and then down to our kit. We need to make sure we create the right tone and we take it forward in the right way. So I wanted to just make that clear. We are appreciative. I appreciate the administration. And Jamesburg Board, with all due respect, looks forward to moving forward in a more respectful way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mrs. Ratner?
Just really quick, just to go along with Ms. Bora's suggestion with the town hall, I think that that's a great idea. My only consideration might be having two, one for during the day for, you know, seniors who may not be comfortable driving at night and, and parents. And then the other at night for, you know, possibly working adults who may not be able to come during the day. That would just be my, you know, my only suggestion there. And, you know, I just want to say it's been, you know, less than two months since, you know, myself and Ms. Bora and Ms. Fabiano have been on the board. I've learned a lot, you know, and there's never going to be times where all going to agree. You know, I tend to ask a lot of questions as you guys have seen in a short period of time. But I do really appreciate everyone, you know, giving me, you know, the time to ask those questions. And I feel like, you know, we're doing it respectfully. We're not necessarily yelling and arguing and screaming at each other. And, you know, when I ask a question, I'm, I'm getting an answer, which is, you know, in the end, that's, you know, all we're looking for is just to make the best decision with the information we're given. So, you know, I hope we continue to do that. You know, we're not all going to agree on everything. But at the end of the day, as long as we're all trying to do what's right, I think that's what is important.
Anybody else? Ms. Fabiano?
I just wanted to say that I'm excited for tomorrow. Tomorrow I was able to, I was able to arrange with Mrs. Chanley a tour of all of our schools in Monroe. So I will be touring all the school buildings with Mrs. Chanley, Ms. Skirby, Ms. Spearman, Ms. Ratner, Ms. Bora. So I was very excited that I was able to arrange that. It's been, like I said, 20, 30 years since I've been in some of these schools. So I'm excited to actually be able to go in them and see, you know, what exactly we're talking about. This is going to be nice.
Is that a quorum?
Ms. Spearman?
Yes, tomorrow.
Is it a quorum? I believe we spoke with these.
Oh, I thought you said it was tomorrow.
Is it a quorum and is it acceptable to?
I believe it is.
That was five of us?
Yes.
Isn't the only conversation that we can have is what toppings would they like on their pizza?
Well, you could just look at the pic, yeah. Just looking at the bills.
Ms. Spearman?
Just for clarification's sake, because now we're using the words town hall and special meeting. Are we talking about having a special meeting for this presentation of where we're at with the referendum that of course would include public forum or what?
Just, just to clarify, my idea was just for the administrators to present it to, I don't think the board needs to be there. It would, that would again be a quorum issue, right? Unless we make it publicly, then we have to follow the sunshine law.
Saying, what is this?
Mrs. Belko?
I would like to leave that decision up to our president and in consultation with you as to whether it should be an open house administration runs or it should be a board meeting. I personally, either way, it doesn't matter to me. I would like to, you as the president have the discretion to call a special meeting.
All right. I, I think we should do it as a special meeting, a special board meeting and have the presentation. And, you know, we can have public comment. Is that, I, I'm confused what you meant by a town hall style.
I was suggesting not to do it as a board meeting, but just to do it as a town hall that the superintendent is hosting, the acting superintendent, I apologize, for the district. So it, it's, it's independent of the board. I don't think the board needs to be there. I did, that was not my original suggestion. I've seen this done in other districts. And it usually happens at the time that it's all ready and we're marketing. Our district did that too. We, we went around different school, we had multiple, you know, marketing sessions for it. But at that time it was not, nothing was, you know, there was, it was all set in stone. It was like, this coming in three months, you've got to vote for it. Right now we are going out and telling them, this is coming a year later. It's really needed. You know, this is what we're considering and allowing them to speak up with their concerns, which again, I understand, Michelle, your holdbacks against it. But I'm only considering something that does not change the scope of the project considerably to the point that Mr. Teague made, that little adjustments here and there. Just so that we have something that, you know, has more public weight behind it. But I don't, I don't see the need for a board meeting though because I don't, I feel like this is, this could be a superintendent. I don't know. I believe we discussed this during a CEC meeting, coffee with the superintendent or coffee and bagels with the superintendent. This would be like, something like that in my mind.
I understand what you're saying, but then how would you, how would we quantify the comments from the public? If you do a board meeting, you have public forum, people can come up and, and they can express it. It's recorded, it's out there to the public, it's live streamed. I'm just, I'm asking.
No, and that's a great question. I, I believe we can record those. If, I'm not sure if, I may be wrong. But we could just trust the administration to bring it back to us in a report.
Ms. Arminio?
If, if you have a town hall meeting and you ask the, the architect to make changes, we need to be there to hear that. I don't think he should be making changes personally.
I don't, I don't believe that we should be making, taking any action at a town hall. A town hall is to give the public that doesn't really show up at board meetings because they're really long and they talk about a whole lot of other stuff they're not bothered with. We're asking the town to come out to, this is like a presentation about school expansion that the superintendent is making to the community, part of things that superintendent do and get the feedback from the community, put it in a report. And Mrs. Chanley is great with that. Just, you know, bring it up, bring it to us in the next meeting. And, and I felt like what I understood from what was just decided was that the work is starting tomorrow. And, and now if something comes back to us in the next board meeting in the superintendent report through the town halls or the surveys, then we take action on it as a board, which could mean pushing this forward. You know, which is not what I agree, which is not what any one of us wants to do at this point. But we would have heard the public and then decided as a board to not act on it because it's in the benefit of the public to not, you know, that particular concern. But at least we would have heard the public and I, I'm confident that that would get us more support. End of the day.
Do you want to make a motion for one?
I'm such a rookie at this.
What am I making a motion for? No special.
Presentation?
The town hall presentation.
Okay, so I make a motion asking the town, the school administration to hold a town hall before the next board meeting to get public input on the plan that's being worked on.
Is there a second?
Do I need to rephrase it? Is that right?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just to, just to confirm, does this mean that board members would not be allowed to attend if they wanted to?
You can't have a quorum.
Just we can't have a quorum.
We should have a special meeting. That's it.
There's a motion on the table. We have to take a vote on it.
Yeah, you have to vote on the motion.
And we can do another motion for a special meeting.
And we can do another motion for a special meeting.
Madam? Roll call on administration holding a town hall presentation?
Before the next board meeting, yes.
Before next board meeting, moved by Ms. Bora, seconded by Ms. Fabiana. Ms. Arminio?
Oh, make it tough for me. I'll vote yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
I'm gonna vote no.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Turel?
Yes.
Ms. Belko? She stepped away, Mr. Rutske?
I'm going to abstain on this as well.
So noted, Mr. Nikotinsky?
No.
Ms. Spearman?
No.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
That's five yays, that's the majority of the members present and voting on this? So, motion passes.
Still think we should have a special meeting.
Okay. Okay, is that it with other board business? It's 12:10 already. Any other board business? Seeing none? Okay, our next item is the public forum. You have four minutes to speak, please come and state your name and address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mary Radak, 23 Riviera. As suggested at the last board meeting, to attain information, I went to the district website to check out the date of this meeting, when this Board of Education's goals caught my attention. From the website, goal three, continue professional development for board members and achieve board certification through the NJ SBA's Academy Program in 2021. Boardsmanship training to be included within this goal to improve the effectiveness of the board. It's a two-year goal, knowledge is power. The courses offered are from the NJ, NJ SBA's Board Member Academy and is a unique certification program designed to deliver high-quality training and professional development in all areas of school board responsibility. Courses range, cover, excuse me, courses cover a range of topics including governance, leadership, finance, labor, policy, school law, sustainability, and STEAM. Hopefully, the BOE members elected this year have and will continue to take these courses and become certified, and our newly elected board members will participate in this program. Ms. Spearman has completed the new board certification and I hope she continues the complete certification process. Presently, there is only one board member who is board certified, Paul Rutske, and Rupa Siegel was the only one on this past board who became certified in her three years on the board. There are board, there are members of the board serving more than two terms who have not achieved this certification. It was quite shocking last year that Mr. Rutske's experience and knowledge were not appreciated and acknowledged. There aren't many requirements to become elected to the school board. One would hope those elected who want the most knowledge want to fulfill the BOE's goal and serve the children, the staff, and the community to the best of their ability with the best training offered. Perhaps, after participating in courses mentioned above, along with doing your due diligence, meeting with experts, knowledgeable people in the town, listening to the public's input, this BOE will be able to come up with a plan to service all our children in a safe, appropriate academic environment with schools that meet our growing communities' needs for now and for the future in an intelligent, well-thought-out way. After all, in the end, what you do is make a recommendation. The public, the community decides by their vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, here I am again, Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. It is what it is, but I'm going to tell you, and, and many of you know I supported you through your elections and things you've done here, and I always said, I'll support you and agree with you on things that you do that I believe are right, and there will be things that I don't think are not right and I'm not going to support you on. And I don't see any transparency out of anyone on this board. I say anyone, I shouldn't say anyone, because there were people tonight that voted to push forward this referendum. You cannot sit here with good conscience and tell me you want to be transparent with the community because you're afraid of losing six months' time on something that is, could be over a hundred million dollars. We don't even have an exact ticket on it. And then to ask some of the questions that you're asking now after the fact tells me, are you confused? Do you know how this process works? Have you watched any previous board meetings? Listen, I was the first one up here to talk a lot of garbage about old boards that didn't do things right, but they had special meetings. They had many of them, I watched them, people sitting here. Guess I'll read you some of your own quotes. We should slow things down, we need, we need the data to be presented, we need transparency, a town hall with input from the community first, logistics. Suddenly, it's all out and I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed in, in, in Mrs. Bora because she spoke about her concerns and I think she was, I'm disappointed, maybe not in you, maybe you were sold a bag of tricks, because why would we go to an architect, approve it now, spend the money, and then say, Mr. Teig, can we make changes? You know, every time you make a change, it costs money. And if we're worried about making changes before we put the plan forward, that means we don't believe in the plan because we want changes. So, six months magically is going to make or break? It's been three years, we're in a pandemic, we're seven and a half percent, percent inflation, we want to build schools now, we want to spend hundreds of millions of dollars? I mean, I, I, this is like a circus. Honestly, I watched you guys go around in circles and circles and circles and circles tonight, and then you approve it and then you're asking questions, can, can we go back to the architect? Okay. What is going on? You can yawn.
I apologize.
We are the only district around, if you look at referendums we put out, that our business administrator isn't even involved. And you know what? I've called him out for things over the years. This is monkey business now, just because we want to spend money and, and prove polit- I, I don't get it. I don't get what you people are doing. Any major corporation, the CFO is involved. I wasn't even going to talk about that, but then when I see you chasing your tails and you don't realize we're going to have to spend more money every time we, okay, can we change this, Mr. Teig? There's no financial concepts in some of your brains and I don't know where this train went array, but I will not support this referendum. I will make sure that I speak about it in the community so that the community doesn't, because you don't care. And it's the superintendent's search, it's this, it's the COVID. We come up here and we are just donkeys and I'm disappointed.
Just because you don't agree with us doesn't, and, excuse me, you're out of order. And I can make a comment. Just because you don't agree with us does not mean we haven't done our due diligence or that we're not transparent. That's your opinion and that's not supported by fact. Next.
Have we ever had a discussion?
Excuse me, you're out of order. You're out of order. You're out of order. You're out of order.
I'm back in order.
No, you're not.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so I just wanted to say, as far as, um, hiring an in-house attorney, that would be a great way to save money on legal fees and instead of discouraging people from making Oprah requests, we, we need to encourage people to make them. In fact, we should teach civic engagement and encourage people. We shouldn't pay attorneys by the hour. That's one part. Another part is, just, um, thinking about my own family experience, some of my family are either plumber or they do the replacement for heaters and all of those other appliances that need replacing, whether it's an individual or whether it's a corporate entity. The company will make claims or will say, this will be our estimate, but when you get there on the job and you're making a replacement, especially if it's 20 years out, 30 years out or more, you find that the cost is way beyond what the company has stated. And I would come in on the side of, um, a referendum. We had a good one the last time, but we had so few people voting. Now, we have mail-in ballots, we have the opportunity to have a tremendous voter turnout, especially if the board makes a little effort on voter turnout. And, you know, teaching, messaging, teaching people why we need, people know, we know we need a school, seniors know we need a school. And, you know, the old car at some time, it's just time. You can't just keep replacing little thises and that's, and especially if we haven't replaced in a long time. So, let's go ahead and build a school. We had a great, a great plan last time, we should do it. And as far as masks go, you know, my grandchildren don't mind wearing masks, they know that their masks that they wear protect the other children. They are all into protecting their friends and they know that their friends' masks protect them. What they miss is instruction and spending time with the other kids. Tonight, my grandson had a choir concert, they were all wearing their masks, but they were there together and they sang beautifully. And I, you know, had to miss most of it, but I did get a chance to hear a little bit of it. So, I think that it's really the way it's handled. They were able to go to school, um, there were times when they couldn't, but the school worked it out and the school communicated very well with the parents and the kids. So, they were able to actually get some instruction time in school, which is probably why they had a great concert tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Regina Giacominie, 27 Bard Drive. On January 22nd, Booster Club along with the athletic director threw a Super Saturday basketball event at MTHS. Halfway through the day, the, oh, sorry, halfway through the day, the athletic director received an email from Mrs. Chanley that we were no longer allowed to collect the entry money and a paid district employee was put at the door. On Tuesday, January 25th, I received an email from Dr. Higgins stating that the board attorney had advised the superintendent that the only way we could have the funds was through a vote by the BOE, which never occurred in that January meeting. On the night of January 25th, your BOE president, Mrs. Skirby, tried to make a deal with the Booster Club through a parent to give us half the money, which I didn't know that a board of ed president was allowed to do. If you would like, you can see the text messages.
That is incorrect.
I then stated that we could only do this if we received an email from the district stating that this was an approved deal. We never received that email, so we didn't believe the deal was board-approved. The Booster Club issue, as I said, was never put on the January meeting agenda. So, does that mean the district was unaware of this late-night deal that Mrs. Skirby On January 31st, I received an email stating the money was going to the general fund. Mrs. Chanley never replied to any of our Booster Club correspondence or answered any of our questions. I believe that most of you sitting up there still have a conscience and I would like one of you to follow your heart and make a motion to return the funds to the Booster Club, so we can give out our senior scholarships. We give around $6,000 to our graduating seniors every year and $1,900 might not sound like a lot, but it is. The event was advertised as a Booster Club event in a district-wide email. The event was discussed for months at Booster Club meetings and with the administration. I'm sure everyone who paid admission, including everyone who made an additional donation on top of their admission fee, thought their money was going to the Booster Club. In my, in my feelings, it's deception. And really, if anybody wants to see the text messages, you can. If anybody wants to see the emails, you can, because you know what? I don't come up here often, but when I come, I come with my proof and my evidence. So, if that's how the board of ed wants to run their operation, I think that it's dirty.
Uh, Dr. Lehman, would you like to, um, address that or, or Mrs. Chanley? I know you were involved in that.
I just want to know why it was never brought to the board of, the January meeting when the attorney said that it could be returned via a vote?
Shall I wait for her to finish? Does she have a minute? Did you want me to wait for you to finish?
No, that's my question. Why was it never brought to a vote? And did everybody here know that Mrs. Skirby was making a deal?
I never made any deal.
Really?
Mr. Herman texted me and asked me, wouldn't it be okay if we just split the money? And what I said was no. The Booster Club did not have a building use, there was no approval for it.
That's not what it says in my text messages.
There has been a longstanding, a, a policy in this district that any door sale ticket-
So, you're going to tell me that it wasn't the email that went out Wednesday that alerted you to what was going on with the Booster Club and that there was actually nothing behind it personally that caused you to make a, send an email halfway through the day? Exactly at what point?
Is he speaking his way?
No, just in general. At what point did you realize that this was an issue after the email went out on Wednesday that you didn't notify us until 1 o'clock on Saturday and then you didn't even email the Booster Club, even though you could have, and we had a payoff from Mr. Dowling, who was extremely upset?
Okay, I'll be happy to answer you, but if you're going to interrupt me, then I respectfully will wait for you to finish.
No, I'm done.
Okay. So, just so everyone is aware, it was brought to my attention by numerous parents that the Booster Club was running the event of the, um, Sensational Saturday?
Super Saturday.
Super Saturday. Just so you are further aware, I knew nothing of the event, I went directly to Mr. Dowling, I went to Dr. Higgins and I said, can we confirm that everything was done appropriately? I brought in Mr. Gorski to find out, to make sure that we were following the policy. It was brought to my attention at that time that no, um, building use was completed. It was further brought to my attention that all monies from any event of ticket sales at the door go directly to the general fund. I was then further informed that the 50/50 raffle, as well as any concession stands, went to the Booster Club, which I in no way wanted to affect, even though they did not have any rights to be there. Dr. Dowling, excuse me, Mr. Dowling apologized and Dr. Higgins, the reason why I did not respond is because they responded in kind, because it was an event that was not handled appropriately. Unfortunately, it was not following procedure and protocol and that is why I stood my ground and I have the right to either make a recommendation or not make a recommendation. I did, I was told by the attorney that if I so chose to make a recommendation, I could. Respectfully, we just got 1.6 or 1.7 million dollars from the township, we have other things that we have to turn away, there's nothing wrong with parent groups. I am always positive, whether you would like to admit it or not, I worked collaboratively with your group prior year. I am all for parent groups doing wonderful things for the community, as you may very well do, but I am letting you know that we followed protocol and I was told that ticket sales from the door go back to the general fund, so I followed protocol.
Okay, but, so you follow protocol, but when the attorney stated that it could be put to a vote?
Clipping, that's correct.
Right. Why was that not brought to the board?
Why would I put something to a vote for an organization that didn't follow the protocol in the first place? You didn't even have a building use to be in that facility.
We were working with Mr. Dowling and he told us that he had the building use for every Saturday.
I don't think it's appropriate to discuss an employee who's not presently here.
I'm just saying, that's what we were told.
And I respect that. I am letting you know that the conversation that I had was- I am letting you know that the conversation that I had was with Dr. Higgins and Mr. Dowling. And I will speak for them now, and I will let them know that they did take responsibility in regards to the, to the way in which it was handled in a wrong manner. It was not handled appropriately, and it was not done correctly.
Okay, and if the email went out on Wednesday, that was a district-wide email. Is that not checked by anybody at the board, at the district?
That, that is correct. If the, if the principal of the high school, in collaboration with his athletic director, makes decisions, and I was not made aware of it, nor was my permission asked, nor does it have to be, because I do not micromanage, and it was done in an inappropriate way, even if there was no malice aforethought, we are gonna follow protocol and procedure. At no time did I remove you as an organization to say that you didn't follow procedure. At no time did I say that the funds that were then, the funds that were then made on that evening or that day, that long day, whether it be from the 50-50 raffle, or whether it be from the food, the food area, I didn't say any of that. All I did was say is that the money that was taken should have been taken by an employee of the school, of the school board, as well as that money needs to be returned to the general fund. Furthermore, the ticket sales are supposed to be handled by employees. And during that meeting, Mr. Dowling was not working pro bono or free rein. Mr. Dowling works for the district, gets paid by the district, and that protocol, where he made an error and he takes responsibility for that error, was truly a mistake on their part.
Okay, but once again, the email went out on Wednesday. When you searched it, no, when you researched it, why didn't somebody tell us beforehand, so that we weren't embarrassed in front of all the parents that were there when we were removed from the front door?
Your time has ended, thank you.
Sarah Aziz, 3, Lancelot Drive. At the December board meeting, Board Attorney Vito Gagliardi claimed that the misrepresentation of Mrs. Chanley as Dr. Chanley in five-year books was just a typo. Mr. Gagliardi said Ms. Chanley couldn't be expected to proofread the yearbook, given all her other responsibilities as middle school principal. He also claimed that the yearbook advisor submitted a certification accepting responsibility for this error, and that she stated that she was asked to correct it but failed to do so. It appears that Mr. Gagliardi gave the public false information. Emails received in an Oprah request revealed that Mrs. Chanley was heavily involved in the yearbook process, and was fully aware that she would be described as Dr. Sherry Chanley in the yearbook, in spite of the fact that she had not yet earned a doctorate. When the yearbook advisor wrote to Mrs. Chanley, quote, "I am officially submitting your principal's page. It's signed, Dr. Sherry Chanley," end quote, Ms. Chanley did not ask her to avoid this misrepresentation. Instead, Mrs. Chanley condoned it and responded, "You are too funny. The pressure is on, OMG." Mrs. Chanley was referring to the pressure to pass and graduate from the doctoral program, which she never did. For the next five years, Mrs. Chanley misrepresented herself as doctor in the yearbook. Mr. Gagliardi said Ms. Chanley never described herself as a doctor in business cards or letterhead, but most students don't save their principal's business card or letters. They do save their yearbooks, though. High school seniors that misrepresent their accomplishments on their college applications have their admissions revoked if the misrepresentation is discovered. Other people who lie about their credentials get fired or disciplined in some ways. In Monroe, however, they get a huge raise in promotion. This is wrong. This is a very bad example for staff and students. The leader of our district should be a person known for their integrity and honesty, and as well as their educational and professional achievements. Furthermore, Ms. Chanley has a conflict of interest because her spouse is part of the teachers' union, and as superintendent, she's head of the negotiating unit with the teachers' union. In spite of all these issues, and her lack of standard school administrator certificate, Ms. Chanley is the highest-paid superintendent in the history of Monroe, with a contract valued at $254,000. In fact, this contract lists no end date, and it was so egregious that it failed to get the recommendation of the county superintendent. Finally, the state approved her contract until February 10th, and yet the district had it extended without a public vote. This is very disappointing. There should be a public vote to extend this contract. Given that Dr. Alvek gave over 90 days' notice and 13 external candidates applied, it is inexcusable that the board did not have a highly qualified acting superintendent in place by the time Dr. Alvek left in October.
I don't even know where to begin with the misinformation that you continue to spread throughout our community. Mrs. Chanley has worked here in this district for decades. She has a lot of experience here. She does not deserve to be publicly, these character assassinations based on false information. The yearbook issue that you continue to harp on here and on social media and misrepresent our acting superintendent had been previously brought forth through another board. It had been investigated, and there was no action taken. She has never misrepresented herself to this district. I would appreciate if you would stop harassing our acting superintendent with your, excuse me, you're out of order. It is unacceptable, the character assassination that has continued on our acting superintendent and our staff. Mrs. Chanley, would you like to please address anything?
I will not even dignify the, when you, what is it? What is the, you constantly say, lack of ethics? I'm not sure of the exact terms. But I'm a human being, and I have a right to speak. And I may not be politically correct in doing so, but I'm gonna do it anyway. I have sat here, meeting after meeting, being abused. Verbally, inappropriately, attacking my character. You don't like my decisions? That's fabulous. You don't like the recommendations I make to this board? That's even more fabulous. But ethically and morally, I have served as a servant for almost 20 years. And I'm getting emotional. I have to be honest. I'm getting emotional. And I am tired of people's talking and making statements that are erroneous. And I'm going to set them straight right now. And I have more than four minutes if I so choose. And this being said, the substandard certificate that you constantly put on Facebook is not correct. Any administrator who has a certificate of eligibility to become a superintendent of schools will get what is called a certificate of eligibility. Dr. Lehman, Dr. Alvek, Mr. Goodall, Mr. Ventrilo have the same exact certificate of eligibility as I sit here today in my possession, until you do the job. That is a factual statement. Please write it down. I know I'm being recorded, so you can look it up.
Excuse me, you're out of order.
The certificate of eligibility allows you to apply for and pursue the job. Once you get the job, you enter into a mentoring program of a year-long mentoring program that has to be approved by the state. Dr. Lehman, did you go through that program? Thank you, sir. Dr. Lehman, to your, to your knowledge, did Dr. Alvek go through that program? Thank you. Mr. Goodall, I personally spoke with, has gone through that program. So I have the same certificate of any individual who will be applying for this job. In regards to my educational background, I have a bachelor's degree from New York University in English literature. I have extensive academic backgrounds that far exceed many of the people that sat in this position. I have a master's in education. I have a specialist degree above a master's in educational leadership. I then have all of the coursework for a doctorate degree from Florida Atlantic University. And no, I did not defend, because I decided to move to my husband's hometown after he lost his brother at the age of 44. That time, 18 years ago, they would not support an online dissertation, which is, which is ridiculous. But that was a fact. And they, they asked me, if you would like to finish your doctorate, you must fly home once a month. I had a seven-year-old and a four-year-old, so I made the decision to forego every one of those almost 90 doctoral credits. I then moved to New Jersey, and I, years later, started a program, a doctoral program at Rowan University alongside Dr. Alvek, who was a colleague, alongside Dr. Gorman, alongside many of the others. And I made a decision to open my middle school. And when I opened my middle school, I put my doctoral program, every credit was completed. I then had the equivalent of two doctorate degrees, and I called all but dissertation. After which, I put it on the back burner, so that I could properly open that middle school. And I will tell you, I did it successfully. Fast forward where the email that you are referring to was the year that I was supposed to walk and defend. I was in their program. So I think Rowan University should be held accountable for their level, and should be held accountable for their lack of ethics, because I was in the program that was given to me. Because what happened was, my topic wasn't further approved, there were changes made, and I have a longstanding relationship with my current dissertation chairperson, who's working with me Mondays every single week, in addition to doing this job to the best of my ability. So I would like everyone to know, and if you do not feel it was appropriate for me to take this time, I apologize for any of the time that I have taken away from you. But I am done. I sit here respectfully, doing the best job I can for all children. I took on this job altruistically, because it was the right thing to do, because I have almost 20 years' experience in knowing what this district, for the time being, needs. And I respect everyone's opinion out there that does not agree with me. I respect everyone's opinion here that does not vote yes. But I will no longer sit here and allow you to make false statements about my academic background and about my experience.
Look, I'm not disputing the fact that you have degrees. And I do have a minute and 18 seconds. Other people who have, most people, most people who have, no, I do have a minute left. Most people who have these substandard school administrative certificates, they get it when they get promoted to assistant superintendent or director. And then they get mentored at that level before they become superintendent. Furthermore, all this aside, the county superintendent refused to recommend her. And for $195,000-
That is incorrect fact again.
Isn't it, isn't it an Oprah email that's public? And, you know, and for $195,000? I think we deserve better qualifications than what we have. So someone with this, this background should not be the highest-paid superintendent in the history of the town. For that kind of money, we deserve better.
Can I go? Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Stephen Ryback, 23, Riviera Drive. I'd like to talk about education, change the subject a little bit. I know COVID has been a big issue, rightfully so. Masking, vaccinated, whatever. But I'm curious what we have done, because I've been reading where kids have been falling behind, not just here, a lot of places, a lot of districts. What have we done academically to try to catch kids up? What are we doing? What will we do? Then there's also the emotional impact of the pandemic. What are we doing to help these kids?
Dr. Lehman?
So academic, is my mic on? It's hard to hear. Academically, we've been, we use the measure, I don't know if you remember from when your time was on the board, the measure of academic progress, that's our MAP testing. It's a bi-yearly, sometimes tri-yearly assessment we do. And we use that to monitor the students' progress. We did that throughout the pandemic, and what we noticed is, students were making progress. They, you know, they, the narrative out in the community, out in the New Jersey itself is that, you know, there's a tremendous amount of learning loss. We didn't see that systematically around our, our district. So with all that said, with all that data, we have, any students that's struggling, we use our multi-tier system of support. So we have an RTI process. We have, whether it's a reading specialist, basic skills teachers, to focus on specific skills, specific areas of need for students. In certain subjects, if we noticed there was a systemic gap in academic knowledge, we might have the next year's teachers provide that foundational instruction prior to moving forward. So there's an assortment of general kind of approaches we, we had academically. SEL-wise, social-emotional learning-wise, we just spoke about this yesterday. We have a district-wide SEL reentry plan, and each school has one that's all in line with the district plan. Embedded in that, we have school-based SEL teams that use SEL data, because we give surveys to see where students in each building have needs, whether it's grit, whether it's resilience, whether it's perseverance. And they've created goals, and they're working on those goals this year. Other things they're doing, they're working on, many of the schools are working on parent activities, parent nights out. So we have a lot of stuff. We're actually gonna do an update on SEL at the, whether it's this coming curriculum committee meeting or the following one. So we've, we've been doing a tremendous amount of work.
Thank you.
SEL-wise and academically.
Thank you. And lastly, I want to just clear up what we stated before, because I think there was a little bit of difference in words and interpretation. I'm gonna stand by what I said in that maybe two, three boards ago. We were told that Applegoth cannot be, shouldn't be repaired. It should be replaced, because repairing it would cost more than building a new building. Mrs. Chanley, I'm not doubting what you were told by the architect that you spoke to and the engineer you spoke to. That is probably very, very true. But I can only go by what I, you know, what I was told. And that's what I'm saying. This is what I was told. I'm not saying, you're not telling the truth. I'm not saying that at all. This is what we were told, that. So what I think is important for you guys to do is find out, I mean, why was I told that, and why were you told this? Just make sure your numbers, okay? I think, Mr. Teig, would you say that I was correct in my, what I just said right now as far as Applegoth? That we, we, I'm sorry, you should be asking him, not me. But I just wanted to reaffirm that this is what we heard from architects, from the facilities director, that repairing Applegoth would be almost like throwing money out, because it's so old, and you don't know what you're gonna find behind the walls and on the ground, like I said before. And it would be more cost-effective to build a new school. You were told something else. I think it's important to find out. Let's, before you do anything, let's find out what the real deal is, because it's a lot of money.
Michael Leskey, 50, Mayberry Avenue. I just wanted to take a few minutes and thank each and every one of you for the time you spent, you know, working for our district. I know, yeah, most, if not all of you, put your heart and soul in this work. And I certainly saw that tonight. So again, I just want to thank you, okay?
Thank you.
Good evening. Lisa Padula, A. Driftwood Court. I just have just a quick question slash comment in follow-up to what Mrs. Giacominie brought up. I know, Mrs. Chanley, and I respect what you said, that the attorney said you could bring it before the board, and that's, you know, that's fine. But I just wonder if even everyone on the board knew that this had all been happening, and if you would consider at this point, I mean, the attorney's not here anymore, but if you would consider discussing it as a group. I know, again, could, but now can you? And, you know, $1,900 for the district. I mean, I know we always crunch numbers, and you save whatever you can, but $1,900, you know, to be spread a bunch, a bunch of, you know, among some seniors, goes a long way for them. So I would just like you guys to consider the possibility of, you know, taking a vote and giving it back to the Booster Club. And whatever procedurally went wrong, you know, I wasn't there, I wasn't part of it. I don't know. I know there's building use issues from my time in the PTO. So I just, you know, again, errors are made, mistakes are made. But to give that money back to the kids, I think would be something to consider.
Betty Savarito, 2, Barrymore Drive. I know it's late. I have a question, I believe it's for Dr. Lehman. When we were talking about the cost of home instruction, I believe there was a number of about $170,000 from pre-COVID, and now it's about $400,000. So I would assume approximately that almost $200,000 would still have been spent anyway because of child study team issues, medical issues, IEPs, et cetera. It's not all COVID-related, is that correct?
Correct. It's all in, all types of home instruction.
And a lot of our home instruction this year, we were almost obligated to do, because a lot of those procedures were coming from the state early on in the school year, before they opened up.
Yep.
And then the other thing I want to say is, Mrs. Chanley, thank you for your service. You're an incredible educator. You've really been very supportive of CPAG, and we appreciate that. And you're an incredible parent, which is a lot more than we can say for a lot of people. So thank you, and keep your chin up.
Thank you.
All right, seeing nobody, we're gonna close the public forum. Our next item on the agenda is a closed session.
What if we just refuse to do this?
Yeah.
You too? No, I'm saying, can't we vote to, is there anything in closed session that has to happen?
Just hit, I can do it next time if you're still live.
There's a timeframe for HI-
Oh, HIV has to be done?
Yeah.
How about we do, like, can we step in here really quickly?
It's gonna be a five-hour closed session.
Be it resolved, that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, bullying, confidential personnel matter, superintendent search. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're back in public session. There is no, there's no action to be taken after our closed session. So we are going to adjourn the meeting this morning at 4:00. Our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is Monday, March 15th, 2022. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.